PM, the State Board of Education is returning to open session and a quorum of the board is present. Regular meeting of the State Board of Education is reconvened. Ms. Evans, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
Yes, there are people who have registered to provide public comment today, and I will review the rules. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board, and I will keep track of time. We will be strictly following the time limit so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. Please finish your sentence and end your comment when the timer goes off. Thank you for your cooperation. It is the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people. Any person disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. Public participation will occur in person and virtually. We will begin with those persons that are physically here in the room with us today, and then move to the queue online. The first person today is Bill Lubaway. And as you're walking up to the table, board members, you have a packet that is from him with regards to his public comment. And whenever you're ready, you can, yep, you can see it. And whenever you're ready to begin, you may.
Timer?
Yep.
Well, you already started.
I'll restart.
My name is Bill Lubaway. I'm a resident of Farmington and in the Farmington Public School District. I've got, all three of my daughters went through the district, and I'm down to two grandkids who are in Farmington Public Schools, and I'm disappointed with what they're doing. Before you, I have my handout, which is Achieving the American Dream. The state of Michigan ranks 41st among the 50 states in educational achievement. Significant improvement in Michigan's ranking could be made by eliminating the achievement gap between African-American and low-income students and/or other students. Do Michigan Public Schools teach these kids the proven way out of poverty? A staggering 97% of millennials who followed the success sequence, getting at least a high school degree, working full-time, and marrying before having any children, in that order, avoided poverty. Why isn't closing this achievement gap by a date certain among the board's 2025 goals? And now I'll go back. Yeah, I actually have some facts behind what I said. Page five is an example of why Michigan ranks so poorly. That is a comparison of the reading proficiency between my home district there, Farmington, and Novi, which is the first, stands number one out of 580 school districts, with a 72% proficiency. And the grade scale on the side there, that comes from you guys. The highest we have in the state of Michigan is a C. That's on page five. Pages two and three, if you don't know what a success sequence is, that's where, that's an explanation and a reference to the source on that. So you've got a reference on that. And why you don't, in terms of your goals, that's page four. Your goals are lunch meat. Why aren't we going after the improvement in moving up in the rankings of the schools? And then the other day, we had some little discussion about the Detroit schools, Detroit charter schools and the public schools. And this is, the literacy scores for the Detroit charters are 28%. I'll call it reading a gray level. Detroit Public School District is 14.6%. 14% for the public schools in Detroit versus 28. How can you possibly stand for that?
Thank you. Next person is Deborah Henning. And whenever you're ready to begin, you may.
My name is Deborah Henning. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am a retired educator. I've taught in Iowa, Michigan, and Illinois, and retired from DPS, Detroit Schools, in 2013. What I want to talk to you about is what is missing from Michigan's school reform, which I believe is a sense of urgency in terms of children, of our schoolchildren. Consider that the children that are graduating within the next two years began their school career in 2015, or around, around the time that the Department of Education passed the Top 10 and 10 Plan. They've gone through most of their schooling in schools, many of the children have gone through most of their schooling in schools that were failing and have continued to fail. Yet during that time, we've revised the Top 10 and 10 Plan and heard comprehensive recommendations from two statewide committees, yet we continue to fail. As the gentleman just said, we are rating 41st or 42nd in the state. We've fallen from, in 2005, we were at 25 in the state. And despite the best efforts of you, the Department of Education, the legislature, we are not making progress. And we, those charged with resolving our education crisis have failed to come to agreement on an aligned system of governance. And until we have that, we're going to continue to fail. The children are going to continue to suffer. In Detroit, there are 55 charter school districts with 81 charter schools authorized by 10 educational institutions, managed by 29 educational service providers, and directed by 286 board members. There are few, if any, districts that could survive or weather that kind of competition without academic decline. In my recent study, which I sent, excuse me, early this morning to you, Detroit charter schools averaged 13.7% proficiency in all subjects. Detroit Public Schools averaged 16%, with margins less than 3%. The charters were ahead in social studies and science. DPS was ahead in math and English Language Arts. So without any agreement to accountability, our children will continue to suffer. I ask that you make it a priority for governance reform.
Thank you so much.
And you have my data that I sent to you.
Thank you so much. Next person is Heather Eckner.
I won't have to go to the gym. I didn't know how to pass them out ahead of time, I'm sorry. So I'll do it happen now. You got that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
You don't have to go to the gym either.
Okay. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
And whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, board members, superintendent, and department staff. My name is Heather Eckner. I serve as the statewide Director of Education for the Autism Alliance of Michigan. The Autism Alliance of Michigan is a statewide bipartisan nonprofit that engages in advocacy on behalf of our mission and core constituents. Under the education pillar of the organization, we drive initiatives that address root causes of systemic barriers to access, opportunity, and outcomes in education while supporting increasing acceptance that leads toward the preparation of a safe, successful, and inclusive life for children and youth with disabilities. While we are an autism organization, our work in the education space is disability-wide and it's system-wide. I'm here before you today to provide public comment on the findings of our Special Education Experience Survey, which was conducted in 2023 and released to the public through our report to the community in fall 2024. The Special Education Experience Survey represents the collective voice of students with disabilities and families across the state of Michigan. It is a stakeholder survey aimed toward elevating lived experience, identifying system barriers, and amplifying the voices of parents and students with disabilities who have engaged with the special education system in Michigan to inform collective advocacy efforts. With a statewide survey capturing nearly 900 responses, the last effort of this kind was nearly a decade ago under the focus of the Special Education Reform Task Force, which was led by former Lieutenant Governor Brian Kelly. The findings of the Special Education Experience Survey clearly show the disparities and challenges students with disabilities and their parents experience while navigating Michigan's education system. Michigan's public education system is meant to provide a pathway for all students, including those with disabilities. Our report shows that, in many cases, that is not happening the way it should or we would want it to be. The families and individuals who completed the survey deserve to be heard. Our C-Survey Report to the Community reveals the frustrations and even trauma that have been experienced as part of their efforts to acquire or help their children to acquire fundamental skills through public education. As the first survey since the Special Education Reform Task Force issued recommendations and changes for improvements to the special education system in 2015, the C-Survey shows that there has not been improvement in critical areas over the past nine years. The report identifies top concerns for students with disabilities and their families, which include school funding and resources not being adequate and equitable. I will note, Autism Alliance led the advocacy effort for the current special education study underway. I personally wrote the boilerplate for it. We are engaged with it right now, happy to come anytime and talk to the board about any of the information. We also identified through the survey special education workforce shortage as affecting our most vulnerable students. Students with disabilities are not spending enough time with their peers, and so you have the materials. I appreciate your time. Thank you for your service, and we look forward to talking with you more about this.
Thank you so much. Next is Paula Lancaster. And whenever you're ready to begin, you may.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being, or thank you for having me here, allowing me this opportunity. My name is Paula Lancaster. I'm a special educator and have been a teacher educator in Michigan for more than 20 years. Most recently, I've served as the Dean of the College of Education and Human Services at Central Michigan University, and have had the great fortune of being involved in considerable work across our state and the country related to practice and preparation in special education. I have also had the great honor of serving on the committee charged with the development of the special education teaching standards, which I know you're going to be learning more about later this afternoon, and want to speak to the high levels of collaboration and consensus that occurred throughout that development process. So first, as a member of the standards development team, I represented in part colleagues in higher education and teacher preparation specifically. In early and subsequent conversations with many of those colleagues across the state, there was a strong sentiment that these standards represent exactly the direction we need to be moving toward in our state. I heard appreciation for the changes, particularly the focus on high-leverage teaching practices and the close alignment with the Council for Exceptional Children Standards, which is the premier professional association in our field, as well as the focus on offering a pathway toward a standalone special education credential. Generally, the feedback was very positive and the work greatly appreciated. Second, as a member of the team, I also appreciated the broad participation of constituents from every sector of our field, and including and especially parents and individuals with disabilities in the development process. Throughout that process, all voices were heard, perspectives acknowledged, and the version of the standards that you are reviewing represent many iterations in which those key constituents, team members, and beyond were afforded the opportunity to question, suggest changes, support, and eventually approve. For these reasons and many more, I am confident that these standards represent a strong step forward for the children, youth, and families in our state and for our teachers and leaders. And I thank you so much for your consideration and again, allowing me this opportunity to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Abby Seifer.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Dr. Rice and the board, MD staff. My name's Abby Seifer, and I'm the Executive Director for the Michigan Association for Administrators of Special Education. Our 900 members are the individuals who are tasked with supporting special education programs across the state of Michigan. Staff shortages are the number-one issue facing our members. Almost all other concerns, as Heather mentioned, can be tied back to the lack of certified staff. Our organization is one of many who are involved with the legislatively funded group called Optimize, opening the pipeline of talent into Michigan's special education. As a core team and task force member, I have been blessed to be part of some of the most significant work happening in our country around special education shortage. Michigan is truly an exemplar in this space by including all key voices and partners to identify barriers, solutions, but also really looking at any unintended consequences from those recommendations. We've been tasked with dreaming big about what our future state could look like, and the work has been really exciting. Our collective recommendations and input come from, like Dr. Lancaster said, Michigan Department of Education, educators from both management and labor, the parent and advocacy community, higher education, the legislature, the governor's office, and most importantly, students themselves. I can't remember a time in my history where the work that we have done has the potential to truly change the face of education to the magnitude of the work that Optimize is doing and the teacher standards that are before you today. While we have recommendations in many areas, you'll hear about those special education teacher standards. As you know, IDVA tasked the state education agency with ensuring the credentialing and provision of qualified staff for LEAs. It's imperative that states focus on proactively removing barriers to becoming an educator. Otherwise, we'll be spending time reactively penalizing districts for not meeting their obligations to students due to staffing shortages. Michigan's current requirement of becoming both a general education and special education teacher with a categorical endorsement is unique and was identified as a major contributing factor to our current teacher shortage. After much research of other states, this collective group was able to identify a means of keeping the rigors of credentialing high while removing unnecessary barriers that do not lead to improved outcomes. This was no small feat. We must create and maintain a pathway for special education teachers that is the equivalent of the pathway for general education teachers, to give those individuals looking to be teachers an actual choice to do what they're passionate about. Thank you for your time today and all the work that you do.
Thank you. Next is Lori Vanderplouge. Hopefully.
Vanderplouge.
Vanderplouge?
Vanderplouge, yeah.
My apologies.
No, you're good. It's a hard one to pronounce.
And whenever you're ready, you may begin.
All right. Hello, thank you for the opportunity to be back with you again today. I'm Lori Vanderplouge. I am the consultant for Optimize. I'm very excited about that. And we are actually commissioned by the legislature to study the special shortage issue here in Michigan. And I have had the honor and the privilege to be a special educator in Michigan for over four decades, including multiple positions, and as well as a parent of a child with disabilities, and also working for the U.S. Department of Education. We're looking at how to attract, prepare, and retain not only an effective but a diverse workforce, focusing on urban, rural, and suburban needs in partnership with over 18 organizations. Today, we're focusing in on the preparation bucket and the importance of having a comprehensive set of standards in Michigan that will provide consistency and continuity in the preparation programs, as well as rigor that will ensure our candidates graduate with the knowledge, skills, and abilities to meet the individual and unique needs of our individuals with disabilities in Michigan. These standards will help develop competence with academic, social, and behavioral instruction with an emphasis on content, methodology, and practice-based opportunities. So who actually will benefit from these standards? All will benefit from the standards. Parents with a greater understanding of what is being taught in the preparation programs. Administration, knowing how well-prepared the new hires will be and what supplemental supports will be necessary. Teachers feeling well-prepared to provide high-quality instruction. Faculty for clarity of high standards. And most importantly, the individuals with disabilities who will reap the benefits of having a well-prepared staff. These standards were identified by collective voices from multiple perspectives over a two-year period. So support and adoption and implementation of these standards will elevate our system in Michigan. So again, thank you for your support and your understanding.
Thank you so much. Next is Kathy Fortino. And whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Okay. Get my glasses on. Thank you, State Board, for the opportunity to speak to you about the proposed standards for the preparation of special education teachers in Michigan. My name is Kathy Fortino. I'm retired Associate Superintendent from Muskegon Area ISD and currently the Project Manager for Optimize, the task force that was funded by the legislature in the State Aid Act to make recommendations to alleviate the shortage of special education personnel. So Optimize identified barriers to attracting, preparing, and retaining special ed personnel. Improving credentialing and improving new standards for all of the institutes of higher ed in Michigan was part of a recommendation to reduce barriers. We're very, very excited about the proposed standards. The work of the committee will go a long way in developing a well-prepared special education workforce. Based in part on the research-based, high-leverage practices from National Council for Exceptional Children, these standards will prepare our special education teachers with high rigor, ready to produce results on day one. In fact, Optimize is so supportive of these standards that based on recommendations from our peer educator action team, they have formed the basis of training through MACE, which you just heard Abby talking from, for all peer educators in our state. And Optimize and its partners are also beginning to talk about how we bring these standards and the high-leverage practices to all special education teachers in the state of Michigan. Through the use of those standards and the high-leverage practices, they will develop common language, common skills, and high expectations for all of our personnel who work with students with disabilities. As a special educator for 50 years in Michigan and as the project manager in Optimize, I am wholeheartedly supporting these standards and encourage the state board to adopt them as standards that will prepare students in all of our universities. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next is Valencia Cade. Whenever you're ready to begin.
Super nervous. Thank you for allowing me to have this space to speak. My name is Valencia Cade, and I'm currently a special ed supervisor for Ferndale Public Schools. Proud veteran of the United States Army, proud product of Detroit Public Schools as a elementary, middle, and high school teacher, general education, and special education teacher. I am so honored to have played a role in the standards committee. And I kind of share my background because I want you to know that the leaders that put together this committee really did their due diligence in making sure that we had really, a really good representation of a lot of different stakeholders. Education is in my blood. My mom is a retired Detroit Public Schools teacher. And like I said, I served there for almost 14 years before going to Washtenaw at the ISD, before, again, going to Ferndale now. The majority of my work for the past three years has been on recruitment and retention. So I see that this work is so valuable so that we can fill these positions because day in and day out, I'm, you know, looking at resumes. I'm, I work for HR. I might as well just be HR because, you know, we have to have the qualified people to be in places to service our students. They deserve that. As we know, our special education students are GNS students first. So they deserve to have highly qualified people. And sometimes it can be a barrier for special education teachers to have to have all of these, you know, jump through all of these hoops in order to be in the classroom. So as a former GNS teacher and special ed teacher, I do see the value in that, but also we need to make sure that we have, like I said, qualified teachers. So I just wanted to affirm the work that we did. It wasn't an easy process. It was a sacrifice in time, but it was an honor, honor of my career to be a part of such amazing work. We had some, you know, very rigorous conversations. So although we did use those CEC standards as a base, we vetted each one of those standards. We didn't just go along to get along. We looked at each one to make sure it aligned to the important intricate work that we do as special educators. So again, I hope that you will support the work that we did and know that the committee that played a role in this was a very diverse group of people who were on the ground, running in these areas. So I just thank you again.
Thank you so much. Next person is Vanessa Kiesler. Good afternoon, State Board of Education, Michigan Department of Education members, Superintendent Rice. Are you ready for your favorite three minutes of the month? My public comment? So obviously, I'm here to talk about the grants clock. It's an honor to come after all my colleagues speaking about the special ed prep standards, so excited to hear the outcome of that. But I'm here to talk about our grants clock. So congratulations, we're up to 92% of the $4 billion that we were tracking. There is still 20% of the competitive grants left and 50% of the direct grants left. As we talked about last month, those are down to some of the harder ones, some of the more specific ones. We continue to watch the 35M literacy supports, $87 million. There are steps that have to happen to get it out, so I'm sure that's where the department is. But obviously, districts are excited for those to come out. And then we continue to watch the 12D consolidation grants. The 12C has moved, and that's wonderful. Looking forward to seeing the 12D come out. They're kind of two halves of the same coin. And then there's a, there's a chunk of remaining educator grants. I see some in this month's grant packets. But again, educators and literacy are such core parts of what we're doing, so we keep watching for those. Also wanted to congratulate the department on the release of their grants repository. That's a very exciting development. It's one of the things, as we talked to districts, that they said most is, we have to go everywhere and find. And actually, in the process of trying to track this, it is extraordinarily hard to keep track of what's come out and who knows and where. So the grants repository is such a nice advancement. I'm glad you got that out and continue to keep up the efforts. So the next step would be to help districts more automatically be qualified, to get the grants for which they're eligible, and link the MYKIP platform, Michigan's Integrated Continuous Improvement Process, to the grants process so that it can be more standardized. And I imagine that's work that's underway. And I'm actually done early, so I'll just continue to say that Launch Michigan, aren't you surprised? Launch Michigan continues to work on the Michigan Education Guarantee. And I appreciate the commenters talking about the urgency of our state to commit together to a path forward for all of our kids. And we look forward to collaborating with all of you. Forty-five seconds back in your day. Try not to have too much fun. Thank you all for your time. Thank you. And the last person in the room today is Bree Mogenberg.
Thank you. Just so you all know, I gave Nikki and Tom a copy of the book that I will reference, and there's a factual sheet with sourced information inside of it.
Whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Yep, thank you. This board refused to recommend removal of sexually explicit books in schools and even turned down a resolution that I personally had presented. A resolution that would not have removed such books, but instead required that parents were notified and given an opportunity to opt their child out with an alternative provided. This refusal is actually evidence of your inclusiveness to book variety. Therefore, inspired by this board and directly by DeWitt Schools that last year was preparing young students for a week of trans- young students for a week of transgender pronouns, I have co-authored a book for children, a book where pretend pronouns are referred to as schmonouns. Is everybody awake in this room and at this board table? I'm just curious because it doesn't look like everyone's awake and listening. I'd like those, like, 10 seconds back if I can get them back, please. This book teaches pronouns based on chromosomes and anatomically correct privates while stressing boundaries which prevent sexual abuse. As a board member labeled and now proud provocateur, I present to you pronouns, 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 not schmonouns. And I'm going to read a few pages here. .018% are the very, very rare cases where both private parts are found in traces. But in this book, we won't go those places. Boy, 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 a boy has testicles and a penis that has a tip. Girl, 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 a girl has a vagina that has labia like lips. Schmonouns, 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 in the country and in the town. Some people lie with schmonouns all around. Preferred pronouns are an act, so speak with fact. Pronouns, 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 do not use lies and schmonouns. Accept your pronouns in any shape and any hue. Love your body as it is because it is you. Current CDC data reveals that 5% of young adults, including youth in the U.S., say their gender is different from their sex assigned at birth. Yet, even using an inflated .5% of the population being physically or hormonally intersex would mean that 5% of transgenders is 900% higher than scientifically possible. Scientifically, it appears that environment, mental, or psychological conditions would be the culprit of such falsehoods, factors which Michigan schools have played a role in while disparaging facts and pushing false sexual pressure stemming from adult manipulation and presentation in our schools. Based on the logic of this board, I actually look forward to you approving schools that put this in their libraries. Not only does our taxpayer money, but our children deserve to be educated with truth in curriculum, not 900% of fictitious inflated fluid feelings. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to those in the queue online. Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. If you'll please make sure that...
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep. If you'll make sure that YouTube is muted in the background. Thank you. And whenever you're ready, if you'll state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes.
Okay. Good afternoon to Dr. Rice, the board, and staff. My name is Kanika Littleton. I am the Director of Michigan Alliance for Families, a Michigan Department of Education IDEA grant-funded initiative in our state's federally-funded Parent Training and Information Center. Michigan Alliance for Families is a statewide resource to connect families of children with disabilities to resources to help improve their children's education. We help facilitate parent involvement as a means of improving educational services and outcomes for students with disabilities. Since the inception of Optimize, I've had the opportunity to be involved in the initiative to attract, prepare, and retain diverse and qualified special education personnel as a member of the task force, core team, and several action teams, including the credentialing and standards group. I believe the adoption of the proposed standards for the preparation of special education teachers will benefit all students by providing all teachers with a strong foundation to educate diverse learners while maintaining focus on the general education curriculum. As we all know and was previously stated, all students regardless of disability are general education students first. It is imperative that our students are educated in inclusive environments that cultivate learning based on student needs rather than eligibility categories. Advancing equity in education is an important component of the work Optimize has engaged in thus far. Research shows that students greatly benefit from having teachers who look like them and have similar life experiences. I believe that every student regardless of race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, ability level, or other factors should have access to a quality education. In addition, those who wish to become teachers should have the opportunity to pursue their chosen profession without unnecessary barriers. The proposed changes to special educator credentialing and standards will assist in diversifying Michigan's special education workforce by reducing the time and cost of attending educator preparation programs and allow for multiple pathways to completion, consequently improving equity in our overall educational system. As a professional supporting families of students with disabilities and the parent of two students with IEPs, I fully support and encourage the State Board of Education to adopt the proposed standards. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I apologize. There we go. Hello, caller, can you still hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. It's Elise Swinson.
Yes. And whenever you're ready to begin, if you'll please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes.
Good afternoon, members of the Michigan State Board of Education. My name is Elise Swinson. I come before you today as both parent and special education advocate from Michigan and as someone who understands the challenges firsthand, as I'm an adult with dyslexia myself and as a mother whose daughter was diagnosed with dyslexia in second grade. I lived both sides of this journey. My daughter just completed her first year at Central Michigan University, a success that came only after navigating countless obstacles, trauma over the past decade. Today, I want to address the four critical concerns regarding Michigan's recent bipartisan dyslexia legislation, approved literacy screeners, and curriculum implementation. While I deeply appreciate the progress these laws represent, I must ensure that they translate into meaningful and changes across all districts. First, let's discuss the allocation of grants under the Section 35M, 35N. How will these funds be distributed among approved applicants? More importantly, what oversight mechanisms will ensure these resources support evidence-based practices for struggling readers? We need transparency in this process to prevent the perpetuation of ineffective methods. Second, we must address accountability. What specific consequences will districts face if they fail to comply with these new laws and guidelines? If a district continues using unapproved screeners or curriculum, what resources do parents and advocates have? We need clear, enforceable mechanisms to ensure district compliance. Third, I urge this board to consider the critical role of teacher training. When can we expect legislation making letters training mandatory for educators across Michigan? If such legislation isn't currently planned, how can I work together, how can we work together to make this a priority? Letters provide essential foundations and evidence-based reading instruction. We must also ensure teachers receive appropriate compensation for the competing, for completing this rigorous training. Investment in our educators is non-negotiable for successful implementation. Finally, how will parents be actively involved in shaping these changes moving forward? Parents aren't just stakeholders. We're partners in the process. Will the State Board establish formal mechanisms for parent input and oversight during implementation? Transparency and genuine parent involvement are essential for meaningful change. As I conclude, I want to emphasize that parents and special education advocates across Michigan are watching closely. We need these laws to be more than words on paper. The next two years are critical as these bills roll out, and we cannot allow districts delay implementation while more students fall behind. Some districts are moving in the right direction.
Thank you, caller.
But all must be held accountable.
Thank you.
Hello, caller, can you hear me?
This is Elise Swinson. I'm confused. Did you even hear my speech?
We did. Your three minutes was up. We heard you.
Well, there's somebody else at the table. I'm assuming nobody heard me.
We heard you in the room. The next caller has a...
Okay, so I got...
The next caller has a 586 number. Caller, can you hear me? Hello, caller.
Yes, I'm here.
Very good.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. If you can please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes.
Hi, everyone, from the Michigan State Board of Education and Michigan Department of Education. My name is Michelle Melzick, and I'm calling from Troy, Michigan. So, my name is Michelle. Like I mentioned, I'm a parent from Troy, Michigan, and we're within the Troy School District. I'm also a former elementary educator and parent of a second grader who has dyslexia. While I'm grateful for the recent passage of the reading and dyslexia laws, I'm here today because I have serious concerns about the implementation of these changes, particularly in the Troy School District. My daughter continues to struggle despite receiving Tier Two interventions. Currently, Tier Two interventions in the district in Troy involve leveled literacy for reading and Lucy Glockens for phonics, approaches that are not grounded in evidence and are not supported by best practices. These interventions do not align with the Michigan Dyslexia Handbook, and it is disheartening as a parent to see them persist. Our school district continues to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on Lucy Glockens Mossflower consultants. Teachers are not taking the grant-funded letters training. As a result of this, I urge you to make the letters training a requirement for all elementary Michigan teachers, literacy coaches, and administrators. I understand that districts will soon be applying for literacy grants, and I have deep concerns regarding how these grants will be approved. Specifically, I worry the same individuals who supported ineffective models like balanced literacy will be responsible for approving these grant applications. I urge the State Board of Education to ensure that evidence-based methods and expertise of professionals in dyslexia and literacy are driving these decisions. Additionally, I would like clarity on what will happen when districts like Troy continue to use outdated or ineffective interventions once the new laws are fully implemented. Will they lose funding? Will parents like myself have a clear and effective complaint mechanism? Frankly, I'm disgusted that my concerns have fallen on deaf ears thus far. As a parent and former educator, I'm asking for accountability. Our children deserve better, and it's crucial that the promises made through these laws are followed through with clear action. These grant dollars cannot continue to go towards more ineffective or harmful practices. Thank you for your time and consideration this afternoon.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks. Bye.
Mike, are there any other persons who have pre-registered for public comment today?
There are no other comments.
Thank you so much. This concludes public participation.
Thank you very much to those who provided public comment. We know it's not easier to get here, particularly for those of you who attended in person. It's 2:00 PM. Board, we're going to approve the minutes of the Regulant Committee of the whole meeting of December 10, 2024. May I please have a motion? Thank you, Dr. Pritchett, seconded by Senator Bullock. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, if we could do a roll call vote.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder? And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Board, at 2:00 still, minutes of the Legislative Committee meeting of January 9, 2025. Dr. Pritchett, thank you for making the motion. Do we have a second? Second from Senator Bullock. Is there any discussion? Mr. McMillan?
You know, I ask about recording often. Where is that? If I wanted to see this recording or hear it, where would I find that?
You would just have to request it. It's not posted to the website.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that a problem?
Just an email to the State Board Office.
I mean, could it be posted?
We can look into that.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have a motion. We have a second. We've had some discussion. Anything more for the good of the group before we vote on the Legislative Committee meeting minutes of January 9? Hearing and seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton? McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, it's 2:01, and the next item on today's agenda is an update on selected diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts in Michigan. This presentation will provide information on efforts across MDE offices and across the state that are under the broad umbrella of diversity, equity, and inclusion. The efforts support Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, Goal Two, to improve early literacy, Goal Seven, to increase the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage. Additionally, the presenters will provide information about MDE's Language Access Plan that complies with Public Act 241 of 2023. We re-welcome Dr. Renee Garcia, Director of the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and we welcome Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent in the Division of Assessment, School Improvement, and System Support, and Dr. Michelle Harmela, Deputy Superintendent of Division of Educator Excellence, Career and Technical Education, Special Education, and Administrative Law. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. Presenters, welcome.
Good afternoon, Dr. Rice, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to share an update on diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts at MDE. The efforts we will be sharing today primarily align with two goals of the Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, Number Two, improve early literacy achievement, and Number Seven, increase the number of certified teachers in all areas of shortage. The five efforts we will highlight are diversity in literature, teaching comprehensive history, increasing the quantity, quality, and diversity of the teacher workforce, the Student Advisory Council, and the Language Access Plan. These efforts are designed to support Michigan's full variety of students, teachers, families, and programs, facilitate welcoming and a sense of belonging for Michigan students, and improve fairness and access to educational opportunities and resources. We believe that all children have the right to see themselves in their literature, history, and teachers. Now to Dr. Chapman for an update on the work related to diversity in literature.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. The Office of Educational Support's Literacy Unit has actively ignited diversity in literature by way an array of tangible products or publications and experiences which are highlighted here on the screen. This section of the presentation today will lift these publications and experiences. By way of both experiences and publications, the department is very focused on diverse literature to foster student engagement. There is emphasis on engaging students in learning due to the increased competition for children's time and attention. According to NATE 2023 data, the percentage of middle school students who reported that reading for fun on a daily basis was at an all-time low. The Literacy Unit of the Michigan Department of Education is encouraging our local districts to increase time spent reading for both learning and pleasure. This dual approach has proven to maximize student learning and the outcomes thereof, specifically increasing vocabulary and background knowledge. In some, children who read in their free time learn to understand the views of others while also exploring their own cultures. The relaxed personal reading experiences support being prepared for classroom engagement and learning. Engaging students allows us to celebrate literacy by understanding both the how and the why. We have shared this alignment previously, Board, and want to highlight it again today that the how, learning to read, must be research and evidence-based strategies that promote the building blocks for reading, which transitions into foundational structures for reading to learn, which is the why of reading. The why brings joy and motivates students to read while developing individual voice, choice, and feeling connected, which aligns to the theoretical framework of a sense of belonging that, again, promotes engagement and ultimately gains in student academic outcomes. In March of 2023, this publication was released by the Michigan Department of Education, Office of Educational Support's Literacy Unit. The document serves as a means to provide guidance to local districts on the importance of diverse classroom libraries, what should be included in them, and, most importantly, how educators can engage students in lifelong literacy learning through diverse classroom libraries. And now, let's take a look at one of the experiences specific to diversity in literacy, the diverse... the diverse libraries in Vin Harbor, our collaboration.
I liked reading. I grew to love reading. Then I started to realize that the books that I read didn't look like a lot of my kids. I thought that the book should look more like all of our children, not just some of our children. You know, in this little book changed things. There are all these children who play different instruments. Because she plays the guitar, and then she's got a friend. And as you get deeper in this book, you see more and more different children.
It's so much. That looks like it.
Your superintendent, Dr. Butts, and a lot of the educators in Vin Harbor area schools. They created little libraries for you. Turn around, boys and girls. In that back corner, there are a hundred books. And those hundred books are perfect for you to enjoy between now and the end of the school year. Libraries are very important. We wanted to bring the library to you.
A key element of this work was including many opportunities for families and communities to participate in book selection, as we attempted to share in the video. MDE continues to collaborate with Vin Harbor area schools to support the development of lessons for diverse books that align to the science of reading. The lessons include structured literacy focused on word study and vocabulary development, questions that engage deep thinking and engagement, and opportunities to extend learning that connects the literature to the local community and broader world. And now, we will share highlights of experiences for our educators. When we talk about experiences, we often think about what we are doing for our students. But for the past three years, we have hosted the MDE Diversity in Literature Symposium, where they focus on the how and the why of literacy. The 2024 Symposium, which resulted in record attendance of more than 600 Michigan educators, is highlighted here on the screen. Moving forward, as we close this portion of the presentation, we share that diverse literature is a great tool for learning more about comprehensive history, which we believe should be taught all year long. In February, there was a great opportunity to place an extra emphasis on Black history with the celebration of Black History Month. Multiple resources shared by MDE related to Black history have been released in previous years and are currently accessible on our Michigan Celebrates Black History Month webpage, including Teaching Black Lessons, including Teaching Black History, I'm sorry, Lessons from Educators that was published in February of 2024. And now, to share more about the teaching of comprehensive history efforts, I pass the presentation back to Dr. Garcia.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. The Teaching of Comprehensive History effort at MDE was launched based on the vision of Dr. Rice, our State Superintendent. He reminds us that as members of a diverse state, nation, and world, school staff and students need to know our rich, complex history. The history of our country is complex, both soaring and searing, and we have a responsibility to teach it all. The Teaching Comprehensive History effort provides webinars on historic movements, events, and peoples to improve educator understanding of the rich, diverse history of our country and world. Since launching in April of 2022, there have been 39 webinars on 19 different topics. The QR code here links to MDE's Teaching Comprehensive History website, where announcements, resources, registration, and recorded webinars can be accessed. Today, I will highlight webinars that have been produced since my last presentation to the board. So The Art of History in African-American Life and Culture was presented by Dr. Young, Associate Professor of History at the University of Michigan. A Shared Existence, African-American Visual Artists and Writers and the Black Experience 1920 to 1940 was produced in collaboration with the Charles H. Wright Museum of African-American History, focused, sorry, I said that wrong, the Charles H. Wright African-American Museum, focused on the Harlem Renaissance and the Great Migration. Women's Anti-Slavery Activism was presented by Dr. Simmons, Professor of History and Women's and Gender Study at the University of Michigan. The presentation focused on source material related to slavery, abolition, the Civil War, and Reconstruction, with Harriet Jacobs' book, Incidents in the Life of a Slave Girl as a Central Source. Using Literacy to Enhance the Social Studies was presented by Dr. Dornbosch and Dr. Phillips from Oakland University. Their presentation shared resources and pedagogy for incorporating literacy skills within social studies lessons. In August, Dr. Parker, Assistant Professor in the Department of History at Michigan State University, presented a webinar on the Civil Rights and Equal Rights Movement in the United States in the late 18th and 19th centuries. Dr. Monte Miror Vasquez, who earned her PhD at Michigan State University and now serves as the Executive Director of the Hispanic-Latino Commission of Michigan, presented on the history and impact of the U.S. Temporary Labor Program, known as the Brocelo Program. The session's chronicled why and how the program emerged, elements of policy structure, and who was impacted by the program. Library of Michigan Reference Librarians Kendall Dura and Mindy Babarskas presented researching women in Michigan's labor movements. This webinar used the novel Women of Copper Country and the nonfiction book, We Kept Our Towns Going, as springboards for interdisciplinary and inquiry-based learning. They demonstrated how to find and use primary and secondary sources from the Library of Michigan, Mel.org, and other online sources. Dr. Parks from the Zekelman Holocaust Center presented women's experiences during the Holocaust, which provided a more nuanced understanding of the Holocaust and its impact. The presentation explored women's experiences under Nazi control, focusing on Jewish victims and survivors of the Holocaust, as well as women who risked their lives to resist hatred and help others during one of the darkest times in human history. As you heard this morning, in collaboration with the Indigenous Education Initiative and Anne Heinemann, Tribal Librarian for the Saginaw-Chippewa Tribal Libraries, the most recent webinar, Mondubiging, was a presentation about a new community-led classification system designed by Saginaw-Chippewa tribal community members, which centered indigenous knowledge. Coming soon is another collaboration with the Charles H. Wright Museum of African-American History, I think I got it right this time, the Evaluation of African-American Music. This webinar will explore music from enslaved Africans' powerful spirituals to the global hip-hop phenomenon today, highlighting Black musicians who paved the way for creative freedom and innovation across the eras. In April, we will produce a webinar with the Indigenous Education Initiative and the Confederation of Michigan Tribal Education Department titled Honoring Connection: Essential Understandings for Michigan. There are more webinars coming. As they are confirmed, they will be added to our webpage and communicated to Michigan educators. MDE appreciates these organizations who have been supportive of the Teaching Comprehensive History work. The Michigan Legislature has also supported the work and has provided funding for expanding comprehensive history. $6 million was provided to districts through a competitive grant process. The districts have developed and are currently implementing their plans for professional learning to teach a full American history and purchase books and other resources to support the goal of teaching every middle school and high school student American history that reflects the diversity of Michigan. Additionally, MDE was provided funding for a limited-term employee to develop a toolkit to support the teaching of comprehensive history. This work is currently in progress within the Office of Educational Supports. Finally, we worked with bill sponsors on legislation to teach one unit of study on six historically discriminated groups: African-American, Indigenous, Asian-American and Pacific Islander, Latin American, Hispanic American and Caribbean American, Jewish American, and Arab American, Chaldean American, and North Africans. The bills did not get over the finish line in the previous session. And now I will pass the presentation on to Dr. Harmela.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. The importance of diversity and inclusion within our society is mirrored in our schools. Ensuring students learn history and see themselves in that history is supported by the educators who serve them. Research shows that all students, particularly students of color, benefit socially, emotionally, and academically when their schools have a diverse educator workforce. We have made progress in this area and still have work to do. I'll briefly review related data, investments, and efforts that are supporting recruitment and retention. Solving the educator shortage must be rooted in these three elements: increasing the number of educators across various disciplines, ensuring we maintain and enhance the quality of our educators through pre-service and in-service support, and recruiting and retaining a workforce that allows our students to see themselves in that workforce. We work on improving quantity, quality, and diversity simultaneously. Much of this data you've seen before. Teacher preparation program enrollment in Michigan declined from 23,203 in 2011-12 to 9,512 in 2016-17, a 59% decrease. But it has increased every year since then to 16,260 in 2022-2023, an increase of 71% since 2016. The number of people who have attained initial certification has also increased each year over the past five years, with 4,017 teaching certificates issued in the 2018-19 school year and 4,518 issued in 22-23. The number of teachers of color has increased over the last eight years by 2,272 teachers, or 34%. Of note are increases in particular for our Black, Latino, and Asian teachers. This slide depicts additional details and shows that, while not as large in number, we have also seen increases in teachers across other ethnic groups since 2015, 16, and post-pandemic: Asian, Black or African-American, Hispanic or Latino, Native American or Alaska Native, Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander, and two or more races. When we compare the diversity of our student population to the diversity of our teacher population, we see we have more work to do. Students of color make up 36.6% of the total student population, and teachers of color make up 10.7% of our teaching population. MDE and other organizations are working on various initiatives to address the quantity, quality, and diversity of our educator workforce. Grow Your Own programs are of particular value as they cast a wider net than historic recruitment efforts, and they generate a larger and more diverse mix of candidates who, in time, will be our next teachers. These initiatives focus on current school staff preparing to become teachers, as well as encouraging students to become teachers through our Explore programs. Our Future Proud Michigan Educator Launch Program is a CTE-funded program, and it prepares students for careers in education, as well as other human services. And it offers three credential options to completers that are relevant to our educational workforce: Child Development Associate, known as the CDA, Michigan Youth Development Associate, or MYYDA, and the Registered Behavior Technician, RBT. Talent Together is a registered teacher apprenticeship partnership that includes 56 ISDs, 384 local school districts, and 19 educator preparation providers. In collaboration, these partners are assisting support staff to become teachers. While early in its operations, Talent Together is seeing good results. They've had 4,100 applicants with more than 1,100 enrollments in the first two cohorts. To date, they have supported 229 teachers in obtaining their initial certification. In addition to seeing large numbers of applicants and enrollees, the candidate pool is more diverse than our current teacher workforce. 24% of Cohort One's candidates identify as people of color, and 41% of Cohort Two's candidates identify as people of color. Improving the diversity of our workforce goes beyond ethnicity. When we learn about others, when we immerse ourselves in the cultures of others, we find out how beautifully rich our world is. We find out that there are many ways to live, serve, and engage in our vocations. We also learn how similar we are in so many ways, and yet how richly different we are. I will share only, well, we actually cut the video to two minutes, right? We're only sharing two minutes of a longer video. It features educators from our Michigan School for the Deaf. I want you to think about our goal of ensuring the diversity of our workforce. We want our students to see themselves in that workforce. Consider the many and various benefits to our students when we achieve that goal. Be prepared to read the closed captioning or to use your ASL skills if you have them when watching this clip. Dr. Garcia. Back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Harmela. Board, you are aware of the MDE Student Advisory Council and the guidance they wrote to help schools create safe spaces for students. Our work with the council continues. The Student Advisory Council provides perspectives to MDE and educators in a variety of ways. This group meets monthly as a whole group and in subgroups. The power of the group for MDE is that it brings student voice to the forefront. We meet kids where they are, and we hear them out. The Student Advisory Council has provided feedback on a variety of work that MDE is engaged with, including diversity in literature, post-graduation opportunities, voter preregistration and registration, and through sharing their career technical and registration, and through sharing their career technical education experiences and wishes. The work of this team is important to MDE, and I am thankful to be a part of the MDE team that supports the Student Advisory Council. The final effort we're sharing today is MDE's Language Access Plan. This plan is designed to ensure that all Michigan families have access to MDE materials that are designed for families. This includes a variety of materials to support academic, social, emotional, and nutritional needs. The plan complies with PA 241, otherwise known as the Meaningful Language Access to State Services Act. The plan is being implemented within MDE. When this plan is fully implemented, all materials intended for families will be translated to Spanish and Arabic, and each document will have information for access to translations in six additional languages that represent the next most populous languages in Michigan: Bengali, Chinese, Albanian, Japanese, Vietnamese, and Urdu. MDE team members who interact with these materials or families directly will participate in plain language training, which will support clear, concise language and will benefit all families. All materials will be ADA compliant. In closing, we want to give a shout out and a thank you to Michigan's educators, MDE staff, Dr. Rice, you, the State Board, for your support, your time, your continuous work to improve diverse and inclusive learning opportunities for Michigan students. Back to you, Dr. Rice.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia, Dr. Chapman, Dr. Harmala. That was a very quick, very substantive presentation. I appreciate your sharing. Board members' reflections. Senator Bullock.
I got a little, just a Bullock thing. Slide 19.
Okay.
Because I probably said it in here on several— North African is not what African American, and so for—unless there's a specific reason in the future, can we put them in the same context?
Yeah, so I'll tell you, that came from the draft bill language with the legislators. So we pulled the language that they were using in here. But I do hear—you, I double-checked it. I remember. You want me to give you a name?
Egypt is an African. So is Morocco.
So, as you know, Senator, oftentimes you work with legislators who have particular ways of cutting up the world, and you have to work the best you can with them. We hear you, and we appreciate that. These three bills are going to undergo some rethinking in the next few months, and this gives us an opportunity to share that. Thank you. More questions, comments? Mr. McMillan.
I guess—I saw that, you know, the targeted ethnic groups for teachers is increasing the percentage. How is that done without crossing the line in illegal discriminating, like, in hiring practices, or—like, how—what are the strategy—or how is that done?
Sure. So, teacher recruitment is a broad strategy. Part of talking about teaching and learning is reaching many audiences. Sorry, I'm fighting a little bit of a cold. So, communication is key. Letting people know there are programs now that we have some incentives, if you want to call it incentives. We have reimbursement for tuition. We have stipends for student teaching. It makes the teaching profession more accessible to people who maybe prior it wasn't accessible to them. So those are just two small things.
Okay. And also, I noticed that the gap, you know, between, like, non-white students and non-white teachers is about 26%. And that's about the gap that I see nationally, anyway, and probably in Michigan, of male teachers to female te—you know, to male students is about 26%, 27, I think, nationally. So what is the—what is the strategy for having more male teachers? What's going—what's happening there?
Same strategy, reaching out to all diverse audiences. And I'll just give you an example from earlier on, when I wasn't at the department but was a superintendent. Having male teachers in an elementary classroom was very unusual. But again, promoting education, making it more accessible to those who'd like to be educators, and then reaching out to students earlier to promote the field so that we sort of break down those myths about what teaching is all about. And I know we've presented to you before on some of those strategies. So it would be no different for males as it would be to other ethnic groups to say, "We need more teachers that look like our students in various places."
How is—it going? I didn't—you know, I didn't see that chart for—
I'd have to check.
Eight percent of male.
Yeah, I'd have to check to see what that number is shifting like. I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay. I'd like to see that.
Yeah, we can work with our OEE department to see if we have that information.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. Thank you.
The Grow Your Own programs date back two years.
Right.
So they are—for all intents and purposes—not registering on the numbers that you are seeing. Their impact is future relative to this set of data. People should just be cognizant of that. And you've had people at this table, young people from Eastern High School, young people from Holland High School, young people from Macomb ISD, boys and girls, young men and young women, who have testified to the fact that they didn't think they were really interested. They took a course to experience teaching. They got geeked on it because they realized kids are looking up at them and expecting something of them, and it made them feel good about who they were. You know, they're five years older, they're six years older, they're eight years older. But all of a sudden, they don't feel like the—you know, the third oldest or youngest in their family. They feel like a big kid, like an adult, and pouring into this kid, it changes them. And so it really is casting from a wider net to get more boys in the profession, to get more historically underrepresented populations in the profession, more Blacks, more Asian Americans, more Latinos, and, 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 more Native Americans or Indigenous nation folk. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Who is next?
Mine's simple. Just in addition to the educators that you all will inform about the events that are upcoming, if you can just—if there's some sort of way that the board can get that information on a continuous basis.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah. And it seems to me that the webinar series is available, is that right?
It is.
We post every webinar.
We do.
So all 39 webinars on all 19 topics. Did I get the numbers right?
You got the numbers right. Some are still going through ADA compliance.
Okay.
The ones that are ready are available through this QR code, but we can make sure you have it in another way, too.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Other comments or questions? Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Other comments, questions? Going once, going twice? The video that you saw on the Michigan School for the Deaf is a beautiful video. It was distributed last week, is that right?
I feel like it was.
I think it was last month.
Last month, okay. All right. And it is online, so it went out to the world a little while ago. You should check out the entirety of it. I think it's five minutes or so. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, gentle people. Great presentation. When you present in the afternoon, people are dropping in energy a little bit. It's that whole after-lunch thing. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next item on today's agenda is a presentation of the proposed standards for the preparation of special education teachers. Today's presentation is a proposal for the adoption of new standards, the preparation of teachers of special education in grades K through 12. This presentation will be followed by a period of public comment and requests for approval. We welcome our presenters. We re-welcome Dr. Michelle Harmala, Deputy Superintendent of the Division of Educator Excellence, Career and Technical Education, Special Education and Administrative Law; Kelly Brozansky, the Director of the Office of Educator Excellence; Dr. Sean Cockney, Education Consultant Manager, Office of Educator Excellence; Dr. Gina Garner, Higher Education Consultant in the Office of Educator Excellence; and Ms. Teri Rink, Director in the Office of Special Education. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. I do want to share my appreciation for all those who took moments to share on public comment. It was very heartening to hear about the support. I do want to clarify, because a couple of the—those who spoke during public comment asked you to adopt the standards. We're not asking you to do that today. In fact, our process is sharing and asking that we go out for public comment, and then we would come back with that public comment prior to asking you for adoption, which would happen some months down the line. So this is informational, not a request to adopt. And I'm going to hand it over to Gina Garner or Kelly Brozansky. Kelly Brozansky, thank you.
Thank you.
So, as Dr. Harmala said, today we're pleased to bring you the proposed standards for the preparation of special education teachers to the State Board of Education. These standards provide the programmatic foundation for a new endorsement that will be added to currently available special education teacher endorsement options. This work overall supports Goal 7 of Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, which, as you know, is to increase the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage. We operationalize Goal 7 as increasing the quantity, quality, and diversity of our teacher workforce. Today, we will share work that builds on existing progress around quality. Previously, the State Board of Education approved professional knowledge and skill standards, which strengthen the quality of preparation for all new teachers, regardless of the content area, to support the needs of diverse learners, allowing special education teachers to focus on providing support for specialized instruction and increased access to the general education environment. These standards will work in tandem, improving the overall system of education for all learners. Today, we'll focus on increasing the quantity and quality of special educators in Michigan through a new option for special education teacher endorsement. Through this new option, we hope to increase the quantity of students to be served and the quality of those services by increasing the number of special educators. Gina, can you share how we got here?
Here we are. Work to build standards—excuse me—for a new special education teacher endorsement was informed by prior committee work completed by OPTIMIZE, a task force created by Section 94D of the State School Aid Act. This group was charged with developing a comprehensive, multi-year plan to attract, prepare, and retain qualified personnel for children with disabilities through forming a coalition of partners from across the state. The Teacher Credentialing and Standards Group subgroup recommended offering a standalone special education endorsement that could allow a special educator to be placed in programs for students across multiple disability areas, disability identification areas. This allows for more focused and specific coursework with the entire preparation program focused on special education pedagogy. In August of 2023, a committee of stakeholders representing a wide range of individuals connected to special education in Michigan was convened to begin the work of creating a new special education teacher endorsement. The standards-writing team worked until the summer of 2024. In March of 2023, the initial draft of the proposed standards was sent to critical partners in the K-12 and higher education communities for targeted feedback. That feedback was reviewed this past summer, and revisions to the standards were completed as a result. Twenty-five individuals participated on the standards-writing team. Thirteen individuals participated in targeted feedback for the standards-writing team. These individuals across both represented multiple perspectives of special educators across the state. They included special educators, parents of students with disabilities, intermediate school district and district-level administrators, higher education faculty from special education preparation programs, and Michigan Department of Education's Office of Educator Excellence and the Office of Special Education. The standards-writing team aligned the new standards to Standards for the Council for Exceptional Children, or CEC, their initial practice-based professional preparation standards for special educators. CEC standards are organized around five domains, or broad categories, of teacher knowledge and skills as listed on this slide. The team reviewed CEC's standards and domains, and then determined if additional standards were needed under each domain. As a result, the team retained CEC's domains and added or removed standards within them based on Michigan's needs for special educator preparation. These proposed standards create opportunities across preparation, the K-12 education system, and Michigan as a whole. With these standards, preparation programs for special educators can be strengthened to emphasize how to support students in the least restrictive environment, expand student access to general education through skill development, and through enacting high-leverage teaching practices, provide cross-cutting instructional skills to support students with a wide range of needs. We hope to increase the capacity of our educational system to serve students with disabilities because of the increased flexibility this proposed endorsement offers for both teachers and districts. The revised certification system includes professional knowledge and skill standards that prepare all teachers, regardless of their content or grade level, to provide learner-centered instruction that meets the needs of a wide range of students. This allows a special educator the time to focus on providing explicit support and intervention for students in special education programs. Additionally, a standalone special education endorsement option is expected to increase the number of individuals seeking to become special education teachers. Addressing a demand across Michigan, reciprocity could also be easier. This special education teacher endorsement will be an addition to the currently available special education endorsements. No special education endorsement will be removed as a result of this new endorsement addition. All currently certified special educators will continue to hold their special education endorsements on their certificates. This is an additional option for prospective or current teachers. There are no subtractions. These new standards will inform preparation programs that wish to recommend teachers for the new special education teacher endorsement. This will be a standalone endorsement that does not require the addition of a general education content area. However, a teacher can easily add a general education content area or another specific special education endorsement to this endorsement if desired. Key shifts for this endorsement include the ability for an individual to earn this endorsement as a standalone endorsement on a Michigan teaching certificate. Individuals may, if they choose, also add general education content endorsements by completing another preparation program, clinical experience, and then passing the appropriate Michigan test for teacher certification. Another key shift is an increased focus within preparation programs on providing academic intervention and support across all content areas, with an emphasis on literacy and mathematics development. Current special educators choose one content area of focus and endorsement. Our goal is for these special educators to have the knowledge and skill to support children across multiple content areas, especially in those critical areas of literacy and mathematics. A final shift includes greater flexibility in special educator placement. Current special educators must be placed according to their special education endorsement. The proposed special education teacher endorsement would have the flexibility of being placed—of being assigned across multiple special education programs and meeting a wider range of student needs. A teacher with this new proposed endorsement may be placed in cognitive impairment, emotional impairment, specific learning disability, physical impairment or other health impairment programs, and in resource rooms. This is inclusive of all levels of cognitive impairment programs. Some programs are excluded as a placement option for individuals who will hold this endorsement due to the specialized communication, developmental training, and clinical experience required to serve students in these programs. A teacher with this new endorsement may not be placed in an autism spectrum disorder program without a permit or a special education approval. They may also not be placed in early childhood special education, deaf and hard-of-hearing, or visual impairment programs, or provide services for adaptive physical education or speech and language impairment. or speech and language impairment. The next steps include a period of public comment between January and February. The standards-writing team will meet when public comment is closed to review and address resulting changes to the standards prior to a final presentation to the State Board of Education in the spring or summer for approval of these standards. Other implementation steps following the State Board of Education's approval of these standards include the development of additional rules for the Michigan Administrative Rules for Special Education to include the new special education teacher endorsement. This is anticipated to take approximately 18 to 24 months. It will also include the development of a new Michigan test for teacher certification aligned to these new standards for teachers completing these new programs. This is anticipated to take approximately three years. Finally, implementation will require communication and technical assistance to our higher education partners that wish to offer this new endorsement and to our K-12 partners to inform them about the new option for special education certification. It is anticipated that, if approved, teachers would begin to emerge from these programs with the new endorsement in the 2028-2029 school year. Thank you for your time this afternoon. Are there any questions?
Thank you, presenters. We appreciate the presentation. Board members, questions or comments? Questions or comments? Ms. Lipton, Ms. Snyder?
Thank you for the presentation, and this is really more of a comment, but from your presentation, you know, it appears to me that holistically, this process was really designed to add some potential flexibility, but without sacrificing excellence. Is that, am I getting that correct flavor from?
Absolutely. The rigor of the programs was a consideration and a concern to assure that our special educators are prepared in a rigorous program that's aligned to standards.
Any other further questions? No? Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Snyder.
Yeah, so we've talked about this before, and it's my understanding that this is actually highly controversial to de-categorize special education endorsements. And I would even say that this morning, when I heard that we're going to break down, or at least SFRC is looking into, you know, special education as a cost and differentiating those costs, it'll be interesting to see what they come out with and in terms of like all the details related to what's covered underneath insurance, what's covered underneath, you know, there's, the conversation is very deep. The depth of what goes into special education costs is very deep. But I still feel like, generally speaking, I heard this morning that we're trying to categorize mild, moderate, and severe, and the reimbursement rates for the cost of special education now on the backside of the day I'm hearing, let's generalize it from a teaching standpoint. And I don't think that's very respectful from a teaching standpoint, really, when it comes down to it. And I know that I've listened to special education teachers that are specialized in cognitive and emotional, saying that those two impairments really should not be in the same area. So when we say we want to broaden what we expect of them by making it a standalone credential and then, but we're going to reimburse according to how we really do differentiate the needs that they have, I'm going to be very interested in looking to see how that sort of pans out over the next several months with the SFRC study and how they choose to break down exactly how this is going to work out. And that's not at all undercutting the importance of narrowing the shortage that we have. I would argue that the biggest things you can do to narrow that shortage is to actually require the certifications once we agree on them, not give out waivers, but also don't simultaneously give immediate consequence, but ask for local school districts to create plans that work for their local school district to get certified teachers in those areas and truly pay them what they should be getting paid for specialized education that they're providing. That's another thing I've heard from special education teachers over and over and over again, which is very unique in public education and when you compare it to other industries. There's really no other industry where you can go and get a certification and still kind of be on par with everybody else, even though you're providing above and beyond something different. So, you know, I don't, it's just interesting to hear, let's differentiate it when it comes to reimbursement this morning, let's not differentiate it when it comes to what it takes to narrow that shortage and just make a standalone certification. I think we have to be really careful about how we move forward with this, and that those are just my initial reservations that I'll share. And I know that we've had special education teachers at the board saying the opposite of what you guys are saying, that we should be sticking with the categorized care that we offer and still pushing for those categorized certifications and not be handing out waivers like candy. So I'd like to talk more about that. I'd like to understand how the SFRC, you know, comes into play, and I'd like to see special education teachers paid more.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you, was, were there any questions in that, or would you like?
Lots of statements.
Well, I heard that. But my question is, would you like any feedback associated with those statements?
Not really. But you're welcome to give. If you have something to say, please do.
I just want to kind of differentiate because there's three categories we're talking about at the same time. So there's student eligibility. We're not asking for changes in that. So students are found eligible based on whatever their manifesting issues are, and they might be found eligible as a student who has a learning disability or a cognitive impairment. That's not changing. Then there's teacher endorsement. We're talking about adding, not deleting, so there'll still be all the categorical options for teachers to choose. One thing we know is there are cross-cutting instructional practices, we refer to them as high-leverage practices, that are common for many areas of disability, not all, which is why we differentiated the group that could not use this particular endorsement. And the third category is student placement. Where are they placed in terms of their instructional program? They might be placed in a program labeled cognitive impairment, but they don't necessarily have to have a cognitive impairment in order to be placed in that particular program. It's the program that meets their needs best. So I think it's important to keep those three categories separate. Endorsement from teacher, placement of student, eligibility that gets the student the services they need. So I hope that's helpful.
I'm still hearing, it is helpful to some degree, but I'm still hearing that they're placed where, based on what's best available, as opposed to pursuing the environments that are best overall. And I would just push back a little bit on, we aren't decreasing, you know, qualification or identification. That isn't accurate. Our MARS rules did change, you know, from the perspective of even autism. We've seen autism on the rise in CDC, but the students, the number of students that are identified in Michigan as in need of autism services are going down, which is not an accurate reflection of where we're at. We know where we're at, right? CDC has been very clear that it's on the rise, and yet we're servicing less and less students overall. So, and I know, again, I know that those two things are differentiated in what we talked about here today with endorsement. But, you know, I know that MARS rules have changed, and that is, I'm just, I'm very cautious about what it looks like to say, okay, well, now you can also get this endorsement, which covers all of these things. I think that moves away from making sure that the environments that students actually need are available to them, and then pushes us into a place where we have to say, well, where are you best fit, given the fact that we didn't pursue the environments that you actually need through this process? So I'm very hesitant right now. I'm going to be really looking forward to all of our stakeholders weighing in because, again, I know it's been very, it's been very controversial in all of the different circles of people who are advocating for special education students. And since we've seen the quality of special education go down, I'm hesitant to say, let's blanket certify teachers. That seems like, that seems like a really big step backwards when we're already in a place where we need to provide better services in a more differentiated fashion.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Others? Mr. McMillan?
Just, I have a strong interest in special ed, but I don't, I don't have a deep knowledge, and I have to say, a practical knowledge of it. So I just want to make sure I understand this. It kind of confused me because when I saw this, it says proposed standards for the preparation of special education teachers. But there already is a certification. There's a, like, currently, they get a general certification or a general, yeah, certification, and then a, and then a special one.
They choose a special endorsement.
They all do that right now. And so that second one, the special, the special ed certification has nothing to do with, they have their own standards, that one does?
The other endorsements that we have, all of the special education endorsements that we have have standards explicitly towards that. And then the general education endorsements, they are also.
Right. And so, but to get this, they don't have to have the general education endorsement. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So, okay, so, but it's just, it's called, it's called standards for the preparation of special education teachers. That sounds like it's everybody, like, these are the standards for all certifications of special ed.
Just that one new proposed endorsement.
Okay, yeah, I know that. Yeah, but it just, the name of it kind of threw me because it sounds like it's for everybody. So when I look on 11, Slide 11, so, so the currently, somebody has general ed and then a special education endorsement can do all of these. Is that right?
You would never do, you could never afford to do all of them. You would pick one.
Okay, you would pick one.
You would pick one.
Okay. And so what this is going to be doing is kind of, just the ones on the left, so right now, the folks on the left would have to have a general and an endorsement. So this is going to say, you don't need the general, you just need the special, or this particular one.
Yes. It gives them that option if they chose it.
And if the district chooses, and you know, and I guess, so, I mean, I guess, okay, so you'll have some parents saying, you know, I think my kid should have somebody with a general education as well, but they don't. But, you know, some are, the district may say, well, there's nobody available, and so we're doing this. So it's going to be kind of a, is it just so, instead of, it'll just be able to free up some others, some others of the teachers to be able to, I don't know, you're just injecting additional, additional special ed teachers?
We're adding an option.
Yeah.
So, so that we can have teachers better understand disabilities where cross-cutting instructional practices make sense. So I'll give you my concrete example. I have a, my endorsement is in cognitive impairment. If I were to be placed, and say I were placed in a different type of a program, I would have to have a teacher with that endorsement.
Yeah.
Support my work.
Right.
Right? Instead, I don't have, I could go back and get another degree in each of those areas.
Okay.
What we're trying to say is, on the left, there are some cross-cutting practices that go across all of those disability areas that we can support with a singular endorsement. This isn't new. There are other states are doing it, have done it for years. Michigan kind of took off being the leader in special ed for many years and broke everything into disability-specific categories. In some ways, that works, and in other ways, it's very complicated.
Okay.
Because students' disabilities, you could look at characteristics of cognitive impairment and find some of those same characteristics in a learning disability, but because the student has one label and the teacher has another endorsement, in Michigan, we've sort of complicated it to say, your endorsement must match the program in which you teach. That, again, is separate from the student's eligibility area.
Okay.
So we're trying to give another option to allow teachers to focus on that body of information you would use for students.
And then finally, what, is it the university, the senior teaching universities that will be providing this instruction, or is it any, is that the only ones that will be providing it?
Those are the ones that are available. Any of our currently approved preparation providers can apply to offer this program.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Tilly, Dr. Robinson?
Thank you for the presentation. I first want to start by acknowledging, because I know that we have a lot of issues in this area. I get a lot of complaints from parents. I hear complaints from advocates. So I want to acknowledge those, but I want to also acknowledge how far we've come in this area as well, especially from my time when I was a student. We've come very far in our state and nationally with special education. I wanted to know, CEAC, are any of these recommendations, have they come out of CEAC or has CEAC looked at these recommendations and had any advice?
One of our committee members is actually a member of CEAC, is the representative for the EPPs for our preparation providers. So one of those committee members was on, one of our committee members is currently and serves on CEAC, and then we do have plans to go to CEAC, make sure that we're able to answer any questions they have.
Okay. Because I think that it would absolutely be great for CEAC to have an opportunity to make recommendations for this. There's really no sense of us having a committee if we're not using it. So I think it's very important for that to happen. And as far as the endorsements, part of me feels that the way it is, is great, but I also acknowledge and understand that there's a teacher shortage. So this, I think, will really be helpful in how we're trying to expand and make sure that we have the appropriate amount of special education teachers in the classroom. So that, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Dr. Robinson?
So Tiffany stole one of my questions, but I'll probably ask it anyway. So my takeaway here is that we're trying to streamline, in a way, and also expand the base for teachers to address the teacher shortage in certain areas, right? And my second question is, I've learned a lot of things from my students over the past several years, and one of them is that the term "special education" has, in some circles, is somewhat controversial itself, and that some groups of people find it offensive or challenging, and I'm wondering if you've had any discussion about other terms to use instead of a special education certificate? So some of the ones that my students have been mentioning are to focus on disability education, disability supports, inclusive education, adaptive education, supportive education. And I don't want to play games with terminology, but at the same time, if, and you're the experts in this, if people in the special, what I would think of as the special education community are sometimes bothered by the term, is it worth kind of talking to them and finding out if there's a better way to title this and name it?
That's a great question. I'm going to let them answer if they've had that conversation. But what I will share is this, as a person who thinks words are really important, that would be wonderful to hear some of those things in public comment and hear from people about a right name for this, if that feels wrong. I don't know if you've had those conversations in the group. I was in the original standard-setting group, and I don't remember.
The group did not discuss, although it is a fascinating perspective, did not discuss the use of the word "special education," but all of the other synonyms you just used were used consistently throughout in our descriptions of what teachers did, in our descriptions of who these teachers are and what we ask them to do. So those words were very much present, but we didn't, we didn't tackle that really big question that you just put forward.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Ms. Kusmano?
First of all, thank you. I learned a lot, and I was trying really hard to make sure I wrapped my head around it, and I'm a practicing teacher. So a couple of things, one is kind of a comment, and then the other is a question. I noticed you said that there were 25 people that served on the standards revision process. I'm just wondering, thinking about the number of, like, sheer number of teachers in Michigan, if there's any sort of opportunity for outreach to a greater number of special education teachers, just because I feel like that's a lot of missing voices when you consider, like, the big landscape world of education. So that was just a comment. But I also wanted to lift up that flexibility for endorsement. Dr. Hamala, like, your story actually really helped me as a concrete person, but I do think as someone who places student teachers with Oakland University in our district, we have a huge issue when we're trying to match up a teacher's certification with an incoming, and it's really difficult to do in special education. You don't want someone to not have a placement to learn from an expert if there is overlap. So for me, that part just really stands out because I think about my, I co-taught English for several years with a masterful, now-retired teacher, and I learned so much from her, and I always had the student teacher, and she never did. And it was partially because of the mismatch between the certification and then her And it was partially because of the mismatch between the certification and then her expertise. So for that part alone, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzma. Anyone else? So Loy Vander Plu, Kathy Fortino, and Abby Cypher, could you please stand up? These three, these three people have been special educators and special education administrators for a total of more than a century and they endorse this work. Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate you being here today and helping us understand that what may have been ideal back in the day is no longer possible to be ideal today, given the marketplace. And it's not to say that back in the day, those were unreasonable sorts of circumstances. Back in the day, we had a different marketplace, didn't we? It're a buyer's marketplace, it's a seller's marketplace today. And when you can't get someone with some experience in special education, you end up with me as your child's teacher. And that is not ideal, perhaps for high school French, not so much for any classroom solely or in part with students with disabilities, substantial disabilities, not speech only. So it is a different world. It requires different forms of approach to the to the marketplace and to hiring teachers. And if we could continue as we had, we would have. But the reality is, is that we can't get the requisite number of teachers with any amount of special education experience because we have ridden a system that is so involved and so time consuming and so costly to get to, we don't have the requisite numbers of teachers. We just have to do it in a different, in a different fashion. By the way, there are some analogies, not perfect, to what we are doing with the preparation of teachers of science as well, though the analogy only goes so far, obviously. I appreciate you indulging me. Thank you. Presenters, we appreciate you. Board, thank you very much. We will be putting this out, Ms. Kuzma, for public comment. So we will be getting or at least soliciting broad feedback from the field about what they think about these recommendations. The question is not whether this is better than what we had 20 years ago. The question is, what is the best way to proceed moving forward, given our current marketplace? Thank you very much. Board, thank you, presenters. Board, it is 3:10 and we are pivoting to the report of the State Board of Education President.
So let me start by saying I am honored to have been reelected as president of this Board of Education and I extend my gratitude for your continued trust and support. And I know that we will continue our mission to enhance education for all students in Michigan. I also want to congratulate again Nikki and Tom on their reelection to the State Board of Education. And additionally, I want to thank Vice Presidents Ellen Colgan Lipton and Tiffany Tilly for, again, serving as co-Vice Presidents. Dr. Judy Pritchett for serving as Secretary. Dr. Mitchell Robinson for signing up again for our NASB delegate. And for Senator Marshall Bullock for being pulled in as our Treasurer. So thank you for, again, serving and accepting those respective offices. And we know that these are crucial times to be leading in this area of education. Just to note, the Agenda Planning Committee will continue to be comprised of the President, the co-Vice Presidents, the Secretary, and the Treasurer. However, we encourage all board members to participate in these meetings. You know that this is where we give insight and contribute to the, to the success of our meetings, our monthly meetings and contributing to those agenda topics. The Legislative Committee, I want to thank Dr. Pritchett for continuing to serve as our Chair of the Legislative Committee. And Dr. Pritchett will be reaching out to board members to determine who will serve alongside her on that committee. And again, we meet monthly. Those are open meetings. The public is invited as well as all board members are invited. That's where we get our update on legislative matters as well as give our input and continue to tease out and discuss our legislative priorities. Nikki Snyder has previously served on the Michigan School Board for the Blind Trust Fund Committee and has agreed to continue to represent the board. And we know that that is is an important role. And so thank you, Nikki, for continuing that work. January 2025 has been acknowledged and proclaimed Muslim American Heritage Month in Michigan. This designation honors the significant contribution of Muslim Americans to our state's culture, economy, and communities. And it is an opportunity for each and every one of us to celebrate diversity and promote inclusivity within our educational environments. And as we discussed this morning, it is always, I will say it's more than a benefit for us to learn more about our neighbors and to build relationship with others within our communities. And so encouraging myself as well as others to learn more about the Muslim Americans who contribute to this state and our country. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the children and families who have been impacted by the fires in California, Southern California. My heart, and I know yours goes out to those during this challenging time, to children, some children who still aren't in schools, whose schools do not exist any longer. These events remind us of the growing urgency to address the climate crisis and its profound effects on communities. As we witness the far reaching consequences of climate change, including wildfires, catastrophic hurricanes, and extreme weather patterns in general, as well as deteriorating air quality, it is clear that education must play a critical role in fostering prevention, mitigation, and resilience. We must uphold science, ensuring that students are equipped with the knowledge and tools to address environmental challenges that are crucial steps toward a sustainable future. I commend the Department of Education as well as this board for our visionary leadership in prioritizing health within the state's Strategic Education Plan. I continue to boast about that. By including asthma monitoring as an indicator, we underscore the connection between health, environmental factors, and educational outcomes. Just maybe yesterday, there was a Bridge article that came out and it was talking about school absenteeism rates in Detroit, something that we've talked about at this table quite a bit. And we also know that asthma here in Michigan is is numbers that we don't want to see. But when we look at the numbers in Detroit, they're nearly double that of the state. And we know that asthma is a leading cause of school absenteeism, chronic absenteeism. And the other thing that we know is that environmental triggers like air pollution and substandard housing exacerbate these challenges disproportionately impacting communities like Detroit. I want to acknowledge the Coalition of Healthier Schools. We've had Claire Barnett, who is the Executive Director of that coalition. They've recently written a transition plan memo to the U.S. EPA Administrator nominee and I was able to sign on to that. This plan highlights critical steps to ensure healthier school environment, such as improving indoor air quality, addressing legacy toxics, and ensuring school safeties, facilities are prepared for climate and health related challenges. And these actions are essential for safeguarding students' health and enhancing their ability to learn. I would like for us to consider signing a resolution that encourages our Michigan delegation to sign on and encourage that transition plan. This body, the State Board of Education and MDE, has also encouraged MDE to collaborate with Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, the Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy Eagle to address health and environmental factors impacting educational outcomes. We've talked about making sure that we're investing in school buildings and we've spent a lot of time and expressing our commitment to healthier schools, which reflects our dedication to creating safe, supporting learning environments for every child. I know that we will remain steadfast in these efforts to safeguard the environments where our children learn, live, and play. And as we're talking about priorities, health of schools, health of children, impact the outcomes of our educational outcomes of our children. We've heard a lot about special education in Michigan schools. Would love to discuss and have as our maybe next agenda topics, thinking about listening sessions, whether we're bringing people to the table as we did with David Arison and others when we were looking at school finance and setting out to advocate for school finance. But we're listening, going out and listening, but bringing others in to listen as we look to address special education in Michigan. Charter school legislation, Dr. Albrecht, Dr. Cornell and I, we've, we testified, we, all of us followed the charter school legislation bill. I know we will get an update on that, but I hope that we continue that advocacy and making sure that the bills that have been gone, that did go to the governor, that those are signed. And we will continue to advocate there. But those are my thoughts on priorities. I know we will hear more from Dr. Rice. And again, Happy New Year and thanks everyone for your service.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. I want to join Dr. Pew in congratulating all those of you who have been renamed officers or reelected to the board or, in the case of Senator Bullock, approved with substantial acclaim and probably a little bit of surprise too. In recent years, we've worked closely with the governor and her staff, state legislators and their staffs, and the State Board of Education to accomplish several critical items for both the 2023 and 2024 MDE legislative priorities letters. Here are elements of the 2025 letter, which is close to being sent, to help us continue to make progress toward the eight goals of the Michigan Top 10 Strategic Education Plan approved by the State Board of Education in August of 2020. And there are 20 of these elements. Eight of them are going to get substantial hearing today. More in-person instructional time for students. State law requires a minimum of 180 days of instruction, but students typically experience fewer. The law permits up to nine days for closures due to conditions not within the control of school officials. In 2019, the State School Aid Act was amended to permit seven days of educator professional development to count as, quote, "student instructional time," unquote, which can reduce actual student instructional time additionally to 164 days. Professional development is very important, but shouldn't be a replacement for student instructional time. In addition, in 2023, despite lessons learned during the COVID-19 pandemic, the State School Aid Act was amended again to permit 15 instructional days to be virtual instruction, a potential further reduction of the total days of in-person instruction to 149. Virtual and other forms of instruction as substitutes for in-person instruction may work fine in many circumstances for students in their last two years of high school, who should have a whole range of opportunities off campus, from internships, externships, apprenticeships, and jobs to dual enrollment, early middle college, and career and technical education opportunities. However, it is important for most of our young people to be in school in person, more days rather than fewer. To lose up to one-sixth of the school year on paper is a challenge, a profound challenge for our young people and our staff. Michigan students deserve better. While it's not all about time, it doesn't mean that it isn't at all about time. It most assuredly is in part about time. The research on education during the pandemic made clear that children who were educated to a greater extent in person did better than those that were educated remotely. We need to roll back these changes from 2019 and 2023 for students in grades pre-K through 10 and create greater flexibility in the days and hours of the education of our 11th and 12th graders. Expansion of career and technical education opportunities. Board, you are going to consider a resolution from our Board President to fund expansion of CTE in the coming several minutes. Michigan has made significant progress in expanding CTE participation and completion. Last school year, CTE enrollment was 112,000 students, an increase of more than 9,000 students, 9% in the last three years and greater than pre-pandemic. Last school year, CTE completers, those students who finished a full series of courses, Dr. Hamala, in a given area, totaled more than 52,000 students, the highest level in history, with an increase of more than 8,000 students, 19% over the last three years. Students enrolled in state-approved CTE programs. Dr. Pew, have significantly higher high school graduation rates, college attendance, and higher earnings in the labor market. They acquire skills that prepare them for successful career entry, advancement, and/or continuing education, including college, for high wage, high demand careers. Statewide, 25% of students in grades nine through 12 enroll in CTE. 15 ISDs don't have a vocational millage at all and access to CTE programming can be uneven in the 41 ISDs that do have millages. Over the next five years, an additional significant investment is needed to expand opportunities for thousands of students who, because of funding, geography, transportation, or cultural barriers, have not been able to access state-approved CTE programming. This investment would provide competitive grants to local and intermediate school districts to establish new high school, state-approved CTE programs, and launch a CTE middle school pilot program, both of which align to goal four of the Michigan Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. Dr. Pew, to your comments, mental health and school safety funding. For most of my career, admittedly, a relatively long career, but not as long as some, there was no dedicated funding in the state for children's mental health or school safety, none. And you know this, Dr. Golzinski, because I remarked when I first heard your presentation about being unaware that these dollars had been added, these small dollars had been added in the fiscal year 19 budget. Funding rose over a five-year period of time and the less this year than last, there's still $107.8 million in recurring Section 31 N funding and $25 million in recurring Section 31 AA funding, along with $126.5 million in Section 31 AA funding that has been designated as non-recurring. Consistent recurring funding ensures that important initiatives such as counseling programs, crisis intervention teams, conflict resolution programs, and security upgrades can be sustained and developed over time rather than facing potential cuts due to budget fluctuations. With reliable recurring funding, schools can also proactively address mental health concerns and potential safety issues to further our progress on goal three, to which you referred, of the Michigan Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. Top Ten Strategic Education Plan. Relatedly, staffing ratios for helping professionals. In good measure, due to the increases, the funding increases in children's mental health funding noted above, schools statewide have added 1,700 helping professionals in the last five years, more guidance counselors, nurses, school social workers, and school psychologists. While these additional helping professionals have been enormously helpful, our schools continue to need more of these staff members to support students and teachers in classrooms. 2018 School Finance Research Collaborative Study identified improvement of staffing ratios for nurses, guidance counselors, and other pupil support positions to be necessary to strengthen public education in Michigan. Over time, Michigan has to have adequate funding for school nurses, school social workers, and school counselors in sufficient abundance relative to the ratios roughly of the national associations around these three areas. This funding shouldn't be required to be taken solely from operational funding in per-pupil support, rather, it needs to be separate, directed, and recurring for local school districts and ISDs to properly plan for, budget for, and hire for student and school needs. Increasing the number of certified teachers in areas of support. This is Goal Seven of the Top Ten Strategic Education Plan. Over the last three years, Michigan has appropriated more than $1.1 billion to address the teacher shortage through programs that include, but are not limited to, college scholarships or fellowships, student-teacher stipends, mentoring and induction programs for new teachers and administrators, teacher-student loan repayments, Grow Your Own programs for support staff and students to become teachers, and a rural credentialing hub. Many of these programs were recommended by MDE. We appreciate the support of the governor and the legislature for these impactful investments. Michigan is making progress in addressing its staffing shortages. That said, investments in addressing the teacher shortage, consistent with, as I mentioned, Goal Seven, must continue for the foreseeable future. These are not one-and-done. These are not two-and-done. These are long-term investments. If you gave me a scholarship when I was 18 years old and as a freshman last year, I appreciate that, but I'm still two and a half years away from finishing my college degree. I still have to do my student teaching. I still have a long way to go before I'm a member of the profession, and a longer way to go if I'm in a Grow Your Own program for students in middle school or in high school. And so, the funding needs to continue. We appreciate enormously the support that we have gotten, but Grow Your Own programs particularly are of tremendous value, as they cast a wider net, to which we referred earlier, than historic recruitment efforts and generate a larger and more diverse mix of candidates, and ultimately, teachers. Extending the Pupil Transportation Reimbursement Program. A lot of times, people hear the term equity. They think particular children, particular places. Extending the Pupil Transportation Reimbursement Program is a matter of rural equity. On the recommendation of SFRC and MDE, the legislature allocated $125 million for each of fiscal year '24 and '25. I hugely appreciate this effort. It's a matter of significant fairness, particularly for rural educators that transport students long distances and spend more money per pupil, Dr. Pritchett, on the road and less in the classroom as a result. We must continue this funding. Codification of Michigan School Meals in the School Code. Begun last year with funding from the legislature and the governor, Michigan School Meals has been very successful in providing a breakfast and a lunch daily at no cost to all Michigan public school students who have an interest. Last school year, the number of students eating breakfast daily increased by almost 100,000, an increase of 26%. Number of young people eating lunch daily rose by 144,000, a jump of 20%. While this program is funded in the School Aid Act, it's imperative to ensure its longevity by codifying it in the revised School Code in accordance with Goal Three of Michigan's Top Ten Strategic Education Plan. And finally, in terms of the elements that I'm going to embellish upon substantially, adequate and equitable school funding. As you heard this morning, the fiscal year '23 and '24 budgets were the best in the Proposal A era. That is to say, the post-1994 era, the last 30 years, Senator. And the last three budgets have been the best three consecutively during this, this period of time. So, it's not just these two terrific budgets in '23, '24. '25 budget was helpful as well, and as a, as a threesome, they were the best in a row. In spite of these noteworthy and much-appreciated increases, which have helped districts begin to address staff shortages and improve education and support for children, districts remain underfunded by billions of dollars and understaffed relative to SFRC recommendations. Like the issue of time mentioned at the beginning of this year, trustee, while it's not all about money, it doesn't mean that it isn't at all about money. It is in part about money. A 2019 Michigan State University study found that from 1995 to 2015, Michigan was dead last in the nation among states, Dr. Chapman, in inflation-adjusted total revenue growth, and third-to-last in inflation-adjusted per-pupil revenue growth. We continue to experience the adverse impacts of this underfunding in our teacher shortage and other areas, and to seek to improve our school funding to support students and staff. To properly staff Michigan schools, Michigan must fund inflation-adjusted SFRC recommendations. To address these recommendations and fully meet the needs of Michigan's children, Ms. Lipton, consistent with Goal Eight of the Michigan Top Ten Strategic Education Plan, it will be necessary to consider and ultimately pass a voter referendum to improve funding and profoundly improve student achievement. In addition to those eight legislative priorities, we urge the following. Presentation of the Michigan e-Library, greater charter school financial transparency, expansion of mentoring, induction, and training to include mandatory mentoring of all new counselors and new superintendents, as well as mandatory training for all new school board members, K-3 class size reduction in high-poverty schools, Ms. Tilly, building off the work for youth in foster care in the last legislative session, extended protections for these youth, as well as those experiencing homelessness, and those in the juvenile justice system, mandatory letters, science of literacy training for all elementary school classroom teachers to expand beyond the 10,000 staff educators who have already finished, or at least begun, letters training, mandatory enrollment of resident students through age 20, if they've yet to graduate from high school and they have an interest, updating of statutory listed offenses to permit the department to take action against educator credentials for a wider range of convictions, expansion of substitute teacher qualifications to include a Child Development Associate credential or a Michigan Youth Development Associate credential, and are either over 21 or enrolled in a teacher preparation program, enrollment of all children in public-private parochial and home schools, flexibility in permitting state employees to participate in the MIPSers retirement system instead of the SIRS retirement system, when desired, to help recruit experienced educators to state service, and finally, elimination of the ACT work keys requirement. These recommendations would benefit the 1.4 million public schoolchildren in the state, and they would help ensure a better education, a more stable education, and a more focused education for our young people in coming years. Happy to engage in discussion on these after we do our Michigan Teacher of the Year and Regional Teacher of the Year report. I don't want to step on their, on their show.
On the agenda is L and M. Can I ask about that first, before the?
Can you ask about, say again, please?
L and M, just the ISD, or the ISD changes to special ed delivery?
Sure.
I, I've seen this on the agenda every once in a while, and they, you know, if you click on it, it's just like a, you're, you're saying that you approve it. But are these plans, could we get a copy, could I get a copy of those plans, or are they thousands? I didn't know how large they were.
They're, they are substantial, but, but they are public. Yeah, you bet.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to just see, if I could see these two, I'd just like to see what they look like.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine. What we'll, what we'll do is we will put them in the, in the board packet.
Thank you.
So that everybody can see them. You bet. Yep. Any other questions? Once, twice, thrice, hearing and seeing none, we are going to pivot to the presentation of our Teachers of the Year. We welcome Ms. Kelly Cusmano, 2024-2025 Michigan Teacher of the Year, English Language Arts teacher in Rochester High School, Rochester Public Schools, and Ms. Laura Baker, Region Four Regional Teacher, English teacher in Shepherd High School, Shepherd Public Schools. This is an informational presentation. Our teachers board, and there could be a pop quiz. Thank you.
I mean, it's kind of like we're in sixth hour at the end of our day, so we realize what we're up against, but I am thrilled to introduce Laura Baker from Shepherd High School, who is the 2024-2025 Region Teacher of the Year.
All right. Well, thank you for having me. Like Kelly said, I'm Laura Baker. I am from Shepherd, Michigan, and teach at the high school there. So, it was really cool earlier to listen to them talk about the Indigenous voices, because we work directly with them and have an advocate right in our building. I am an English teacher, but I've taught English, history. I teach student leadership right now in a yearbook. I'm in my 16th year of teaching. It goes by really fast when you're in there. I'm also a Be Nice Advisor, which I know Kristin Ritter presented about
Nice.
Last month or so, yeah. And I also am a member of the NCTE, with the National Council, Council of the Teachers of English. Yeah, I am presenting today to tell you about something that I'm really passionate about, which is building a culture of readers in the secondary English classroom. It's been interesting to listen to all the other presentations today because so many of them kind of related back to what we were going to talk about. I think the first thing is why, and I talk about this a lot with my students. If they ever want to know why, just ask, because I always have a reason, but it might not always click at that moment. But there's a lot of benefits to reading, and I think, well, we'll talk a little bit about how, when they hit high school in that secondary level, we've kind of lost the love of reading. But just a few of the benefits are that improves their focus, their concentration, the mental stimulation, and a lot of times gets them away from that screen and makes them think and approach things differently. Also, the reduces stress, which is, I think, is a big one, because their lives are very different than what any of our lives were like in high school, even with some added stressors in different ways. But also, just a simple vocabulary comprehension, reading and writing skills that go along with it, too.
Okay. Yeah. And, well, just to jump in, Laura, I went into Laura's classroom, and it's wall-to-wall books, so she's downplaying, like, the amount of emphasis that she places on a reading culture in her classroom. And this is one wheelhouse where both of us just have a shared love. If you wanted to know what we were doing on our lunch hour, it was talking about books, and have you read this book, and my mom read this book, and, you know, that, that's the kind of culture that we want to create, especially for secondary learners. We're both high school English teachers. This was brought up earlier, but I think it is incredibly relevant. Reading has gone down since both of us entered into the profession. From the National Literacy Trust, 34.6% of 8- to 18-year-olds, survey respondents, say they enjoy reading in their free time, and that's the lowest percentage since children were surveyed. And in 1976, you can see that quote, 40% of high school students said they had read at least six books for fun in the previous year, and then by 2022, those percentages had flipped. I have two daughters. I have a 13-year-old and an 11-year-old, and we were talking, I was explaining, I feel like I'm the same parent to both, and one's reading for fun is totally different than the others, and the same can be said in our classrooms. So, our job as high school English teachers is to figure out how to reach every child and have every child see themselves as a reader in the high school secondary environment. We know this, and if you are a parent or even have a younger child in your sphere, you know this, that they spend more time online and less time with traditional media. If you ask students who their favorite author is 30 years ago, you would have gotten a very different answer. If you ask our students in 2024 their Snapchat streak, their favorite YouTuber, or what they watched on TikTok, you're going to get a very specific answer, and we want to see that with books, magazines, et cetera. And you can see that time on digital media has displaced time once spent enjoying a book, or even watching a TV, a TV show with your family, which I think is the community aspect that both of us enjoy with cultures of readers. I think this quote sums it up. It is a very recent one. "Books can cultivate a sophisticated form of empathy, yet such benefits require staying with a character through their journey." And that is something I cannot value highly enough. You cannot get the same understanding from an excerpt in my world and in Laura's, where we've talked about this. It's the novels, it's the whole experience of watching that character progress and having students take that walk with you. So, I could go on. So, now I'm going to go back to Laura.
So, I've always taught in a secondary classroom. I tell my students, I teach 10th grade right now, 10th grade is my favorite age to teach.
Same.
And they, they just don't enjoy to read, and I think a lot of us can understand that. Once you hit high school, or once you hit college level, you're not really reading anymore for fun. It's a chore that you have to get done. So, we try to bring that enjoyment back again. The three in 10 students enjoy reading, or more than half of the younger kids did, or do, excuse me. If you ask little kids, you know, they'll tell you the stories they read, or bring home a book and talk to you about it. I have nieces and nephews that will tell me about the books they're reading. High school kids don't necessarily have that. And without these reading skills that come along with even just independent reading, not necessarily what we are teaching them, but by giving them the opportunity to use these reading skills, it takes away that, well, without the reading skills, excuse me, that the future generations are being put at risk of so many skills, just the critical thinking, the comprehension, the empathy, which is a big thing that we have talked a lot about, putting yourself in someone else's shoes, understanding, especially, I teach in a rural area. We don't have the diversity that, say, Kentwood or other schools might have, so allowing my students to experience and just have the joy of reading and finishing a book. So, I'm going to give you a couple examples of how I've done this in my classroom. I'm very lucky to have a school that values this. I've taught in three different districts, and all of them have been very supportive of helping to create readers and cultivate that. We talk a lot about mental health, and especially post-COVID world, but the positive mental effects that reading has on someone alone is the, supports the reason, supports the idea that they should be able to choose their own books. We obviously teach class novels, we teach class stories, things like that, but when children choose a book and select their own book, that, that will bring them more joy and satisfaction, and they are way more likely to actually finish it if you do that. So, I'm just going to brag on my students a little bit here right now. This is, this is the fridge in the back of my room, and every time they finish a book, they get to put a, a little slip on the fridge. We call it the fridge because it's something we're proud of, and they get stickers when they finish a book. These high school kids love stickers, so they get, they get to fill out a slip and then they add to the fridge. This is our fridge at the end of last year. In ninth through 12th grade, all of our students have the opportunity to read independently, and it directly aligns with our goal and learning how to cultivate this environment and make it just something that's part of the norm. Nationally, 88% of students will finish a book that they select themselves, and we make sure that those books are varying lengths, varying genres. Graphic novels have made a huge comeback in telling kids, you know, they get excited that it has picture books, because they think it's going to be an easier story, but sometimes a story is very complex. It just happens to be written in a different genre. And 89% of students will tell you that their favorite book is one that they picked out themselves. So, on our So on our fridge last year, that, that picture I just showed, there were 524 books that were read just in my 10th grade classes. We have about 100, 120 students per grade. So that was pretty impressive. And just since the start of this year, and we made this presentation a couple of months ago. So this has gone up, but 165 books were read by 72 students since the beginning of this school year. These are two of my students from several years ago, but with the books that they read throughout the year, they're pretty proud. And so we took a picture to show. We have found that creating the opportunities, it's what really gets them into it. Like I said, we're in a rural area, so we have a department-wide initiative. My department's for teachers. So we work really well together and have worked to create lists, to order books, to write grants, to try to get books on the shelves so that if they're there, they'll read them. We also give 40 to 50 minutes a week in class. We have 75-minute classes, so that's right at the beginning. It doesn't take up a lot of time. But I was telling Kelly today at lunch that I, the other day, we, we had had a snow day. We'd had a two-hour delay. We'd had several things. And I was like, we're going to have to cut the reading time today. And I, they were up in arms. And then they were like, well, you cut it yesterday. Can you add to it today? And it's coming from students that you wouldn't necessarily expect, but they're liking their book. I had students who asked to take books, their books home over Christmas break with them and stuff because they wanted to finish. So it's been a pretty interesting phenomenon to be a part of. We also, in a small town, a very rural village, we, I walked up to the public library with my students. We had got library cards and let them bring their phones to class one day, which was a really big deal, and helped them hook up the Libby app. And so they have audiobooks. They have books that they can read on Kindles right on their phone. So a kid told me they actually listened to their book on the way to a game, on the bus. So that was a pretty proud moment for me. But also just exposing them to different genres and different authors. I do something in my classes on Tuesdays and Fridays where I just read an excerpt or show a little book trailer, just to show them there's different things out there to help them select their own book. We have the Little Free Libraries. We have a book club at our school. And we're adding in different English electives. Young Adult Lit is exactly what it says it is. And then Modern Storytelling is a class that I, I'm teaching and revamping as we go, but focused on different genres and how stories are told through podcasts, through documentaries, through books, through nonfiction, through fiction, and just giving different opportunities for students who might not have it, especially in the environment we are in. This is just from one of my students, Caitlin, that told me when I gave them a survey at the end that she's always enjoyed reading but never made it a priority. One thing that helped me be able to read more was the independent reading time in class. And it gave her an opportunity to dive stories, dive into stories and read more. And now it just seems easier to take the time to read, and it has been beneficial. She goes to CMU, and I actually saw her a couple of weeks ago. And she said she's read books even when she's in college. So I was glad to hear that as well.
And then also, just keeping you apprised of what I've been doing this month, it's kind of interesting because I feel like some of the presentations, I'm like, are they reading my mind? Because I had the opportunity to go to the Michigan School for the Deaf, and I have been telling everyone about that visit, not just because of the teachers and students who are wonderful and amazing, but also the deaf culture in history is something that I feel like Michigan as just regular citizens are not aware of. I mean, I cannot tell you how many times I've heard from people who were like, my grandparents met at that school, and then they had kids who attend this school. It's so generational. And I just really, really enjoyed my visit, and I thought it was a profound experience. I also had the opportunity to speak to two different groups of people, both of which included students. One was at the U of M Flint Campus, two prospective teachers, and just kind of letting them know that teaching is an amazing profession, and I think everybody should come visit our schools and be in education. And then also for the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals, that's a mouthful, the Women's Summit, and getting to speak to young female leaders and talking to them about my story and being in that space as a young female leader. It was a great opportunity. I just really, really enjoyed my time. So at this point, we're going to say thank you and turn it over at the 11th hour for all that discussion and questions for Laura and myself.
Thank you very much, Teachers of the Year, Ms. Baker, Ms. Cusmano. Questions, comments, concerns, reflections? Ms. Lipton?
Yes, I have a question. I've, thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. You know, I've just been reading a lot about, you know, how different schools are grappling with cell phones in schools and, and what have you. Anecdotally, have you found that, and I'm just curious to know, when you sort of teach a love of reading sort of holistically, do you find that sort of the desire or that sort of knee-jerk addiction to a cellphone is, is less profound?
So one of the best things that happened in my teaching career was, at the beginning of last year, our principal went no phones. They can't have them with them eight to three. They can have them at lunch, and they can have them in passing time, but not in the classroom. And it has made an incredible difference. I would say something that I've noticed now is kids will reach for a book in class because they don't have that opportunity. So I think taking that away a little bit, just so we can help them understand kind of, you know, like when to use it, how to use it, and all the things that we know that go along with having a phone. But I do think by encouraging the reading, giving them opportunities, and then not necessarily having that with them all the time or not having out, if might be with them, they then, like, they, they reach for something different. So they do, like, they'll grab a book. Or I even have some of the, like, Ripley's Believe It or Not books and things like that, that they'll grab off the shelves when they're done, just so that they're doing something different than grabbing their phone, if that answers your question at all. But I do think that it's a different world. I think even just showing them that you can get books and audiobooks, and you can read a graphic novel on your phone and use it in that sense. A lot of them didn't even know that. And I was like, this is free. Like, it's all free. So I think showing them how to use it in that sense also has helped because they just, they like the stories. It's just, they don't get the chance always to experience them.
Thank you. Other, thank you, Ms. Lipton. Other questions or reflections? Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. Great presentation. And the opportunity for teens to be able to pick up the book, I think, is phenomenal because, you know, they are tied to their phone. We know that. So to have that opportunity, when I taught 11th grade English, I had an opportunity to be able to, I had support from the administration that we had just on Friday, that they could bring a book or choose from the, the library that we had in the room. And we had fascinating discussions about what they were reading. And, you know, there was no limits on that it had to be a certain genre or anything like that. So. Oh, thank you. Anyways, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Other questions? Comments? The issue of engagement, student engagement with literature is real. It is waning, and it is affecting all, all aspects of, of education. It's also affecting, I would argue, mental health because what they're replacing reading with is often, not always, but often, screen time. And that screen time tends to be less interactive, less enjoyable, and can, can often drag them, drag them down. So this effort of engaging children or re-engaging children with literature is an important topic. And we've begun that conversation in the, in the department. We appreciate your presentation on this theme. You're seeing it firsthand, and then you cite to survey data on it as, as well. It's a challenge. It really, it is a challenge. And we've, we've had kids who say, well, why do I need to learn to read? Well, where, where are you going without learning to read? Not very far. And, and so you really, you need to not only learn how to read technically, but then you need to build on that foundation, develop the vocabulary, and develop the experience, the knowledge, hand to hand to hand. I'm preaching to the choir, but, but I do appreciate your focus on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, we are sitting at, thank you, Teachers of the Year. Board members, we are sitting at 3:56. The next item on today's agenda is the state and federal legislative update. Bob Wheaton is ill, our Director of the Office of Governmental Affairs. I would like to introduce Mr. Ken Coleman. Ken, could you do the king's way? There you go. Ken Coleman is our new spokesperson in the department. He replaced Bill DeSessa, who unhappily and untimely passed away, as you may recall, a little bit shy of a year ago. But we're, we're deeply appreciative that Ken has joined the department. We will now hear from Ms. Olivia Ponte, Legislative Liaison in the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, who will provide the state and federal legislative update. Ms. Ponte?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. And good afternoon, Board. So as of today, really as of Wednesday, we sit in an interesting position where we're both in the 2025-2026 legislative session, while also still in the process of closing out the 23-24 session. Since the last board meeting, the governor has signed House Bills 4928 through 4930, now Public Acts 161 through 163 of 2024. These laws allow another mechanism by which school districts can install, operate, and receive funds collected from their school bus stop-arm camera systems. Additionally, a large number of the enrolled bills that we had been watching were presented to the governor on January 8th. So what this means is that now the 14-day clock starts, meaning that the governor now has 14 days from January 8th to either sign the bill or veto the bill. Or there's this third option, let this 14-day clock run out, thus rendering a pocket veto, meaning that the bill would not become law. Just a reminder, some of the enrolled bills that we were watching include the Safe Home, Safe Schools bills, which would require an informational notice from schools to parents, informing them about the new Safe Storage of Firearms law that took effect February of last year. Additionally, five of the charter school transparency bills, to which Dr. Pew referred in her remarks, were presented to the governor for signature. Taken together, these five bills would require the average salary of new teachers, veteran teachers, and support staff in a charter school to be published on that charter school's website. It would also require the name of the authorizer and the EMO to appear on all new signage and promotional materials for that charter school. As I stated earlier, we did begin the 2025-2026 legislative session. Speaker Hall did release the names of the committees. So the newly-named Educator and Workforce Committee will be relevant for us, but we don't have a chair for that committee as of yet. We'll probably see that later this month. Just a note, the Senate committees will likely remain the same as leadership remains the same in that chamber as well. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Board, and thank you, Dr. Rice.
Thank you, Ms. Ponte. Any questions from board members? Questions from board members? Dr. Pew?
I guess I could, I kind of want to know, well, I want to know what happened to the comprehensive history bill. I followed the other bills. Did we just chalk that up as one that just didn't make it because of the, how the lame duck ended? Or was there any other context that you could give to that?
There were, there was no time for a committee hearing. It was just introduced a little bit too late in the session for real action to take place.
Okay.
There were three bills. They were introduced in November. Right. So there was a long period of development of the bills. We had some involvement in that, certainly not complete involvement in that. Lot of fits and starts. And by the time they were introduced, we were already in lame duck session.
I think the, our meeting in December, they were in the Senate Committee, right? They were?
I believe that's right.
Okay.
They were in the Senate Committee.
They didn't make it to the Senate floor.
They never received a hearing.
Okay.
Right. There was a, we felt like we were going to get a hearing for those, and it did not happen.
Okay. That helps. That helps.
So those bills that, like, vanished, and the bills that may or may not pass and make those any more legislature, because they're talking with the sponsors about resubmitting them because they got caught in the, the cluster of lame duck.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, it's ultimately up to the sponsors, but they can always reintroduce those bills in this session. Absolutely.
Other questions? Thank you, Senator. More broadly, on, on the, the items that I raised, if anybody would like to ask questions on those. Hearing and seeing none. Let's go to the CTE resolution. Ms. Ponte, thank you very much. That has to be a record. If we could go to the CTE resolution. Dr. Pew, would you like to move the resolution?
Yeah, you're moving fast. I had to make sure I didn't have any questions.
So Dr. Pew moves her resolution. Do we have a second? And we have four people all tied. It's a jump ball, hanging chads, jump balls, all sorts of things. Senator says, give it to Mitch. So there you go. Dr. Robinson with the, with the second. Dr. Pew, back to you, to either read it into the record or to describe it substantially.
Let me see if I can read it into the record. Whereas there are 53 types of CTE programs in the state, from construction trades to cosmetology, and computer science, from aviation to agriculture, from energy to education. Whereas CTE offers a diverse delivery system that provides students with leadership opportunities in various career fields and allows for the rigorous and relevant application of workplace skills while incorporating reading, writing, and mathematics. And whereas CTE provides students with work-based learning experiences to help Michigan develop and maintain a highly skilled, sustainable workforce. And whereas CTE offers students opportunities to earn college credit, industry certification and licenses, and high-wage, high-skill, and in-demand fields. And whereas CTE programs contribute to goals in Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, including Goals, Goal Four, to expand secondary learning opportunities for all students, Goal Five, to increase the high school graduation rate, and Goal Six, to increase the percentage of adults with a post-secondary credential, as well as Governor Whitmer's 60-by-30 goal of increasing the percentage of work-age adults with a skills certificate or college degree to 60% by 2030. And whereas 96.8% of students who complete at least one course in a single-state-approved CTE program or a program of study graduated from high school higher than the state's overall four-year graduation rate by approximately 15 percentage points, and 95.1% reported being employed and continuing education or both six months later. And whereas the number of students in CTE courses has increased from 102,988 in 2021, 2020, 2020, 2021, to 112,156 in 2023, 2024, higher than pre-pandemic, and an increase of 9,168 or 9%, and the number of students completing an entire program of career and technical education increased from 44,226 to 52,625, a rise of 19% and the highest level in the state's history during the last three years. And whereas 25% of students in grades nine through 12 enroll in CTE, higher than pre-pandemic, but with considerable room for improvement, even though 70% of US jobs now require a certificate or a two-year degree. And whereas Michigan must expand access to CTE programs to more students to ensure equitable access and to strengthen the foundation for economic growth in our state. And the Michigan Department, and whereas the Michigan Department of Education presented to the State Board of Education about significant disparities in CTE access across socio, socioeconomic status, race, and geography from recent studies done by the University of Michigan's Youth Policy Lab at the October and December 2024 S B, State Board of Education meetings. And whereas economically disadvantaged students are underrepresented by more than 10 percentage points in nearly half of the 53 different CTE programs offered by the state, including computer programming, engineering technology, and financial management services. And whereas 41% of Michigan school districts are identified as CTE deserts, whereas where CTE participation is much lower than expected, given the characteristics of students and school. school. And now therefore be it resolved that the State Board of Education calls on the Michigan Legislature and Governor Whitmer to provide additional funding to local and intermediate school districts to open new highly quality, high-quality CTE programs, particularly those in CTE deserts and/or areas with opportunity gaps, to ensure equitable access across all schools.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pew. It's been moved, it's been seconded, it's been read into the record. Any additional discussion? Any additional discussion, Dr. Pew?
No.
Okay, very good. Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, I would just say, I mean, I certainly appreciate CTE programs. I think, given the current funding, schools could innovate and ISTs to come up with ways to expand options, whether it's, I mean, with the current funding that they have, I don't think we have to have additional, and also, you know, we always just look at government. You know, maybe the answer to more choice would be non-government choices, innovative options, some kind of vouchers. I just think that it doesn't necessarily have to be government schools and government funding. So I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Mr. McMillan, Ms. Snyder?
I think to your point, Tom, there was a, we were looking at like a post-graduation pathways or something like that, and I had asked if we were going to include all of the options and landscape. I don't know if we're doing that at this point in time, but hopefully we are. I'm voting yes on this resolution. The one sticking point I have when we talk about CTE that I've talked about a lot at the table is breaking down the nine through 12 grades and understanding how we're really encouraging these options earlier, so that we're not looking at students that are just taking, you know, some coursework in CTE, but actually completing a certificate before they graduate high school. The 60-by-30 goal, it still requires students to come back to education as opposed to get out of education, what they should be getting out of education before they graduate. And if we're looking at numbers like 96.8% of students who completed at least two courses in single-state-approved CTE programs graduated at a higher rate, and 95.1% of them are employed, then I would argue that they should definitely be getting that coursework, we should say, starting more like ninth or 10th grade versus 11th or 12th grade, which is what we do with the CTE fairs, is we're really encouraging, like, sophomores to come out and look at the options that are on the table. If they were to be encouraged to look at options that are on the table in ninth grade, and still encouraged to take all of the requirements for college readiness, then, you know, we're looking at a certificated graduate that could still go to college. So I just think that we should be really encouraging that. So if we could start talking about the numbers around how many ninth graders are in CTE, how many 10th graders, 11th, 12th, and we start to see when we increase the availability of these options, these students getting into these programs sooner and actually graduating with the certificate before high school's over, I mean, graduating with the certificate and not having to re-enter education for that certificate that they can and should get before. That's my only sticking point I will keep bringing up, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other, any other questions or comments? Ms. Lipton?
I would just like to thank Dr. Pew for bringing forward this resolution. I think that for many students, the key to their engagement is career and technical education. I think that as all of the research that I've looked at, and that has even come before this board, has shown, is that because career and technical education, you've heard at this board table, that career and technical education does in fact cost more. We even had businesses that have partnerships with local school districts say that these are big pieces of equipment that we, you know, that we help school districts invest in. So CTE has a lot of benefits by engaging a local business to actually partner with a school district. And so it has a lot of community benefits, but more than that, we actually know from business community itself that these are pretty substantial investments that need to be made, and oftentimes a decision to not have a robust CTE program, or we even heard from the CTE deserts in the state that the biggest impediment is lack of funding. And so I think that the most natural conclusion of a resolution is in fact embodied in your resolution, saying these are the benefits, and yes, we would like to expand these benefits, and we need assistance from the Legislature to appropriate more dollars in the budgeting process, which is their purview, not ours. So thank you so much for bringing forth this resolution as it is written.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Any other reflections?
I will, I will say, it, I would say about, I would say 10 years ago, when I first came on the board, Kathy Strauss invited me to go to NASBI and be a part of a work group, and there was a lot of conversation around CTE and giving, we ended up with guidance on CTE, and it took me some time to really think through how CTE benefits students. And research, going to, from Saginaw to Grand Rapids, as well as, as I said, sitting on that, that board, but really seeing how CTE provides necessary benefits for children, and that some students are still being left out because of old stereotypes of CTE, and making sure that the resources are there also for parents to better understand how CTE benefits students. And so I thank the department for continuing to educate us, as well as bringing forward this priority, CTE as a priority. I appreciate Board Member Tilly last month for emphasizing, I appreciate emphasizing that CTE and post-secondary education are not mutually exclusive, that, and we see the data that shows that students see value in both. And also providing a CTE program where if, if students decide that they are prepared to go into the career path that they would like to go to straight from, from that CTE program, we're accepting of that as well. But students have opportunity and options, and so that definitely needs to be adequately resourced.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. Anything more for the good of the group on this? Hearing and seeing none. Ms. Evans, a roll call vote on Dr. Pew's CTE resolution.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Ms. Evans, board members, we are now at Board Member Comments. For those of you who still have some energy, it's 4:15. Ms. Tilly?
I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge two great men, civil rights. They fought for our civil rights, freedom fighters, and they both gave their life to the cause, one literally, and the other one spent his life fighting. This month, we celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Day, Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And in 1968, one of my mentors, and my daughter's mentor, Congressman John Conyers, fought to, to make this a day that we could celebrate. That did not happen until 1983, so he fought every year for 15 years to make sure that nationally we celebrate MLK. And, and I wanted to use that as a lesson for us, to remind us, because in education, sometimes we're fighting the good cause and the good fight, whether it's us at the table or MDE staff or educators across the state. We're fighting for the good fight, we're fighting the good fight for change for our, for our students. And sometimes it takes a long time, so it took him 15 years. So don't give up, because you never know how long it's going to take, but if we keep fighting together, we can get there. So I'm a week early, but happy MLK Day.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Other reflections? Other reflections? To add on to Ms. Tilly's reflection, Dr. King fought for the Voting Rights Act of 1965, which helped give teeth to the 15th Amendment of the US Constitution passed 95 years earlier. So sometimes you win a fight, and you have to re-engage ostensibly on the same fight in order to actualize the rights. Black men gained the right to vote in 1870 by virtue of the 15th Amendment, and shortly after Reconstruction began to lose that right in southern states, and would lose that right for decades until the 60s, until the Voting Rights Act of 1965. So appreciate you lifting up Dr. King, Congressman Conyers. Future meetings of the State Board, February 11th, March 11th, April 8th, all at 9:30, all regular board meetings. If there are any additional topics board members would like to recommend for future board meetings, please notify Ms. Evans and me. Boarded is 4:19 PM. The over-under was 4:45. Enjoy the gift of time. Thank you.